At the very beginning of the work session, if our guest could take a seat for just a moment. At the very beginning of the work session, we have public input per our code, our ordinance section number 220.21C1. Members of the audience shall be permitted to speak at this time, up to five minutes, on the work session topics. We have two topics you can speak on. Not five minutes for both, but five minutes for all of it. The first one was Fifth Third Private Bank Investment Review, and the second one is the former Power Plant site environmental update. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to come forward at this time and speak? Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Gerald Phillips. Avon Lake resident for 20 years. Concerned citizen, certified public accountant. Environmental. Now, if you look at the map, what ALERG is keeping and this very valuable property we're buying as parkland, you'll notice there's a big gap in the middle. While that corresponds to the one building that remains, that's probably the worst hazardous piece of property existing on that site because that's where the PCBs are, and they did a lot of bad things in that building. Isn't it coincidental that they don't want it? We're going to buy it? Also, the property to the lake, that's where the ponds were. Double O two and the other ponds that contain all the supposedly clean material that was cleaned before it went into Lake Erie. You know, again, probably the worst section on that property. The best section is where the buildings were, which is right on the front edge of Avon Lake. So, you know, ALERG wants us to trust them, okay? Well, the public has no reason to trust them, okay? Because the material that the public should have hasn't been disclosed to them. The material that is, that they need to determine this is supposedly confidential, private, and the public can't do that. But yet, this is for the public. And I find it very ironic that the public can't have information to determine whether this project is good or bad. Good or bad. They let you guys have it, supposedly. But I hear Mr. Shamir, you know, say, "Well, I haven't gotten this stuff about a month ago." And finally, they get back to him. So it doesn't look like they even giving it to Mr. Shamir, who's the most knowledgeable on his board about environmental. I mean, that sure smells to me. That sure stinks to me. I'm concerned as a resident. And every resident out there, you should be concerned too. Are we buying a hazardous piece of property like we bought, like Avon Lake Regional Water did? When they bought the coal yard property that never got a permit for the connection? And we don't know it's environmentally sound? And we never got a determination that the affluent from that thing meets EPA standards? That's a Clean Water Act violation. You know that? Federal violation that this city is liable for. You're liable for that violation. Avon Lake, I mean, Avon got cited one of their developments for two violations because I filed a complaint there because they were violating the Clean Water Act. You have violated the Clean Water Act. And ALERG participated in it. So why should I feel and trust, okay? Why should I feel and trust a person that violated, you know, the connection? And they bought the property at the time the water department was negotiating? You know, you're negotiating, you know, to buy the property and you're eliminating a hazard? I mean, 2921.42 of the Ohio revised code talks about conflict of interest. That's a criminal offense. I think somebody should look into it. And we have a lot of conflicts of interest. We do. But that's for the next five minutes. We can talk about those. So why should the, you know, I like to hear, "Why, why should we trust them?" I just consider them a bully. If there's nothing to hide, why not disclose it? To me, it's pretty obvious. It's something they don't want the public to know. And this project is one of the biggest things before the city of Avon Lake. And there should be transparency. There should be openness, but not closure and secrecy. We got a Brownfield committee that met in the secrecy. And their purchase agreement is the result of it. It's illegal. So what? Why are they hiding? I like to hear officials say hiding. And we have a lawyer who basically participates in it on behalf of ALERG.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come forward at this time?
William Zimmerman. So we're going to talk about environmental. By the way, for the record, this is the most ludicrous way to do this. We don't get to hear what they have to say. We don't get to make comments about what they have to say. I have to come up here and hypothesize about what will potentially be discussed and then make intelligent statements about that. This is idiotic. So, as Mr. Phillips showed you, we see the gap in between the parcels, which now, their new sales idea is to sell it as parcels because they think that they can get those areas cleaned faster. Three individual parcels. But Powdermaker Creek runs through in the area that's still pink and does not have anything around it. So the stuff that was just released from the chemical plant down the way that flew down Powdermaker Creek and out to the lake were toxins that we didn't know were happening until some citizen called in because we were on top of all of that. Didn't call the right people because we didn't call the county. But somehow, some way, it started to get taken care of, and they've resolved it. But my problem has to deal with, the most toxic area is right there by Lake Road in that building that still stands. I've asked the council president, "Why is that building still up?" "Oh, because we might have a buyer for it." There's not anybody on the planet that's going to buy that property, that building because that's where they did all the repairs to the transformers, PCBs and oils and all those things. I've spoken to not one, but two different employees that used to work there. And they say it's the most contaminated place on the entire property. It goes three levels deep. You don't know how far down that's still going because now it's working its way through the cracks and crevices of the shale to see how far down it can get. This is so stupid. These people are crooks. They've done nothing for the benefit of the city of Avon Lake. In no way, shape, or form have they been our best interest. So that then takes me to the land that is on the other side of these wonderful new parcels. By the way, go to LoopNet.com, and you can see this stuff because they're trying to sell it because it doesn't look like Avastion Young is being able to go very well with it. You get to the shoreline. As Mr. Phillips says, the two ponds that they did all of the remediation with from the water that was being pushed through the power plant back in the day, they would then try to put over there. These two ponds, they went back and forth. I have other pictures of the machinery and the buildings that were there back in the day. And they show you the transfer back and forth before it's discharged to the lake. The problem is, these places are the most septic up by the water because they're cleaning out all the crap. I've spoken to people higher up, and they say that nobody would want to stir that stuff up because all you're going to do is release it all again. And yet, that's the part they want us to buy. Why is that? Why do you want to buy the crap? So that brings me to another point. That just has to do with the fact that they want us to pay the high-dollar amount. Well, now those prices are coming down according to documents that I've been able to uncover.
Sir, is this having to do with environment?
It does have to do with the environment.
Thank you, sir.
Please allow me a little leniency to carry on to get to that point again.
Thank you.
Because I could talk about the environment here at City Hall and how it's not good because we have mold and rust and toxins flowing through the city's own home, and we're expected to take care of the land that's over there and keep it safe for the citizens. And when you can't even keep your own house safe, that's just putrid.
Anybody else want to come forward on one of the two topics on tonight's agenda? Okay, I see no one coming forward. Then this section will be closed. We're going to now open it up to our guests. If you'd like to come up to the podium, and you can introduce yourselves. Fifth Third Private Bank Investment Review. Presentation by Brian Carter, Managing Director and Vice President of Institutional Investments, and Michael Savage, Institutional Investments Advisor.
How much time do you want to keep this?
Just...
10, 15 minutes tops?
Yeah. Great.
Thank you all for having us come in this evening. This is our first time in. But I'm Brian Carter, and I'm in my 25th year at Fifth Third Fixed Income Capital Markets Group. Mike's been a part of our team for a little over 15 years now.
That's right.
We specialize solely in Ohio local government. So for the purpose of the city's finances, anything that we talk about here tonight is ORC 13514-related investments.
We made a presentation that just basically has two basic segments, starting out where the portfolio of the city currently, how it's invested, what it's earning, sort of the starting point now to obviously, Brian and I being at the forefront of the investment team for the city with the recent change of your previous folks retiring. So a little bit of background about us. We work within Ohio's Local Government Group for Institutional Investments, and we're in Cleveland, or at least in the Cleveland market about twice a month, working mainly with cities around Cleveland, including a bunch of your neighbors. So it was a very good fit to be partnered with you all.
Do you want to click on that?
Yeah, I'll be going back and forth just from slide to slide.
They actually have a microphone here. If you just want to stay here, and you can talk back and forth unless you need something.
You can. You want to? Sure.
So this microphone, you won't hear yourself, but the microphone that is in front of you goes out to the internet because we're streaming right now.
That's fine. Did you mean both of us?
You can, whatever. You can stay here, you can stay there, whatever you want.
We can toggle however we need to. That's fine. Okay. So basically, we'll be going into just two basic areas of portfolio updates, as I'd mentioned before, and then an economic update as to the current interest rate environment and where we expect to be going. And based upon that, how we would suggest we should be positioning ourselves.
So in summary, the city's investment overview consists of $22 million, $82,000 of maturity value. This does include the finance that is in daily liquidity as well with the fixed income. At the current time, the duration of this portfolio is exactly one and a half years. The book yield, including the daily liquidity of the city, is 3.34% yield. We also highlighted the credit rating of the portfolio itself. It's AA+. 71% of the investment assets of the city are in U.S. Treasuries. 25 and a half percent are currently in money market, government money market funds that provide the city daily liquidity. And then just shy of 3% is in the U.S. government agency bond.
This is a tedious but important example. The money market fund and the cash, there's only one difference. Cash, when that hits, it's from interest payments or from maturities prior to being invested in a money market fund. So it's sort of in transit. So you can sort of count that as the same thing. Essentially, we had a maturity, I believe it was today. So that will be in the money market tomorrow. That's why those two are different. And we can certainly, we're not used to the rhythm of how you want this presentation to be, but if you want to, if anybody wants to ask any questions while we present, we're completely fine with that. So feel free to.
So the next is the example illustration of the cash flow of the $22 million. We broke this down by calendar year for liquidity management purposes for the finance office. With a one and a half-year duration average, that allows approximately 50% of the city's investment assets to be maturing inside that one and a half-year timeframe. So all of you are familiar with what happened during COVID. The Fed cut interest rate environment down to 0 to 0.25 of 1% overnight once COVID was announced. So there was a period in time where we were in a zero-interest rate environment. The reason why we like the duration where it is, at one and a half years, is because it allows the city to have a significant portion of the investments maturing sooner. So as the Fed decides to raise rates again at some point in the future, you will have the flexibility of having ongoing liquidity within the portfolio itself. So right now, within 2025, for example, there's still just shy of $6.1 million of liquidity coming due for calendar year end. 2026, $4 million. And then $4.5 million in 2027.
The $6 million in the 2025 bucket also represents what is invested with Star Ohio, which we include comprehensively because that is a very viable and important investment vehicle for our local government clients. And frankly, it's very generous. It's yielding very well. It basically mimics the yield of Fed funds. There are differences for sure. But if you were to overlap Star Ohio's yield and Fed funds, the trajectory of each, they move in tandem within the span of a few weeks. After one resets, the other sort of follows it, going back about 15 years. So it's a relatively, I wouldn't say it's easy to track, but it's an easier mechanism to have an educated guess on what's going to happen with it going forward.
And also with this bar chart, Ohio revised code, you are limited to a five-year timeframe or less from settlement date for any investment. So 2030 calendar year would be the maximum that you would have access to.
We found that's a really good thing overall for clients because it doesn't allow you to really put yourself in a terribly ill-liquid position. And that's, first and foremost, the most important thing about these funds is they need to be there to support the day-to-day operations, the liquidity, the long-term management, strategic initiatives. So it's not necessarily our job or our methodology to take the funds and do anything lopsided in terms of duration or liquidity-wise from that perspective. So it works well. That is the law, five years or less. Good there?
We thought it'd be relevant to share with everyone upcoming maturities. These are the next six scheduled redemptions for the city dating back to COVID era. So the least earning assets within this investment portfolio are slated to be maturing between now and mid-year of 2026. Most recently today, or excuse me, on Friday, there's a Treasury bond that matured at a 352 book yield. And all the Treasuries listed below there beginning February 2026, those were acquired literally five years ago. So we are happy to see them mature one by one.
It's very rare to see an Ohio local government that does not have COVID-era low-yielding investments. The trick is to have less, hopefully. And up to this point, Avon Lake's investment portfolio has done a really good job at that. There's not really a large metric out there that exists of how every single Ohio local government entity is performing. We see a lot of Ohio local government portfolios, so you kind of develop a sense for how everybody's doing. And this is probably, the overall portfolio yield of about a 333 is slightly above average still. So what that means is, especially as we have these last of low-yielding sub-1% bonds rolling off, they're going to be replaced right now at a yield of roughly 3.5% to maybe 4%, depending on the debt and what makes sense to add on that particular debt. That's really all we were going to talk about, about how the portfolio is positioned. If anybody has any questions or thoughts or comments, I can just make some, yeah, go ahead, please, Carl.
Just a thing. When you're looking at, when these roll over, you, how long of a duration are you looking to reinvest for? Are you looking at the five-year or...
Great question.
We take the two, three, and five-year U.S. Treasury yields. Number one, we try to find points in time that the city's ladder does not have anything scheduled to be maturing already. And then the goal from there is, depending on the direction of the finance office's liquidity needs, we would then make a suggestion as to where to place the proceeds, about two to five years in timeframe.
So you're looking at probably at least two?
Right now, probably. Yes, the duration overall is about a year and a half, as Brian said. So what we'd like to do is move that from about a year and a half out to maybe 18 to 24 months, somewhere in there, just because the Fed is still likely to make more cuts, which we'll go into in a second. But the idea would be to try to keep ahead of that and build up the income stream of the city's portfolio as long as we can within the confines of the Ohio finance code. So hopefully that answers. Okay.
Excuse me. Does anybody else have any questions up here amongst our council members? Okay, thank you.
There are two or three slides left. So it's not going to go down a very tedious rabbit hole.
Talk fast.
In terms of the investment strategy going forward, what you're looking at is a chart of, on the left, the upcoming federal Open Market Committee meeting dates. So we just experienced one, was it last week?
Yep.
It was Wednesday? Okay. The next one is the 10th of December. And upon those dates, the federal Open Market Committee chooses what to do with the Fed funds rate. The market, based upon forward interest rate curves, market sentiment, language, economic trends, prices in what they anticipate the Fed funds rate to be after that Fed meeting date. So after the most recent cut, we had gone from a 4.25% overnight yield on the Fed funds rate down to 4%. So right now, we are at 4% as of last Wednesday. As of the next meeting in December, they're anticipating that that rate will also go down another roughly 25 basis points to what's implied today at a 371. That's in the immediate term. However, the, there's conflicting, there's conflicting sentiment coming out from the Open Market Committee. So Fed Chair Powell has said it's far from a foregone conclusion that we're going to cut again. The Chair of the Federal Reserve of Philadelphia has specifically said that she would like to see two cuts by the end of the year. So it's rare in the last 30 years to see such dissent within the Open Market Committee. We haven't seen that. I haven't seen that in my career. I don't believe, I don't want to speak for you, but I don't believe either of us have. So we don't really know where that path is going to go. What it is telling us, more so in the long term, if you look to, I like to identify this by, say, next Christmas, the anticipated rate around that point in time is 3%, just a little above 3%. And so what that's telling you is, within the next 10 meetings, nine meetings, they're expecting cuts around four times.
We don't know the pattern of how quickly it'll happen.
Right.
But the quantity is definitely four.
Right. Part of that two-part answer to your question, Carl, is what do we position? So any Treasury that we buy now or government bond that's a government agency, which is also compliant, and we can add, which we've looked at as well, is going to be somewhere between 350 and 4% yield. So the idea is to try to stay ahead of that number as long as we can. A big thing that's coming up also with the holidays is consumer spending. That's going to drive a lot of where the economy is going to be feeling. And if things, quite frankly, if they don't feel too rosy, that's when Treasury yields start to go lower. So we need to sort of think about that more so than anything else as we're planning what to do with the investment portfolio.
This is our last slide coming up here. And it basically is a continuation of what Mike said. But essentially, what this is mapping out for all of you is an illustration of the current market conditions yield since the two, five, 10, and 30-year Treasuries are listed. This illustration maps out by each quarter, beginning Q4 2025 through this time next year, the Bloomberg consensus average of where interest rates are anticipated to be. So from a planning perspective, since it's budget season, we work very closely with the finance office to determine the best way to lock in yield the best that we can so you can earn as much income as you can for as long as you can, given what these numbers here are telling you.
There is good news here. And I'll make it real simple. It's very brief. But right now, the two- and five-year Treasury, which is a lot of what we're looking at, stuff in that ballpark for the portfolio, yields roughly the same as the Fed funds overnight rate. So it's a little bit harder to say, "Oh, let's go buy something because if we keep it in cash, we get the same as if we buy an investment." But the reason that things are going to, that are projected to look better is the further out you look, the two- and five-year Treasury are kind of staying, especially the five-year, staying within the same range it currently is. While money market is, yeah, looking like it's going to drop. So if we put out a little more money, we should stay ahead of where the Fed funds rate goes because it moves where Star goes. Just one other thing I was going to mention. That was the main point.
If I could, to put this into a different perspective, like for economic development, for developers and builders that come in and business owners, what this means for them is that their loans are going to be less costly. Therefore, this would be a good time to be building, to be buying, to be investing in Avon Lake.
More than likely, yes, yes. With rates lower, that tends to, without being an economic expert at that particular question, that tends to stimulate building, housing, and commercial development and all those things.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues to my left? To my right? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Sure.
Excuse me. I was not at the finance committee meeting, so it might have been discussed. I was wondering if we, as a city, or you guys on behalf of the city, are dealing with interbank loans?
Interbank loans?
No.
No.
And are those strategies looked at within municipalities in Ohio or not?
That's not been part of the Ohio revised code as long as I've been working, that I can recall language on. We'd have to look to give you an official answer at the fine print, but I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for coming up from Columbus.
Our pleasure. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
It's very helpful as we are in our budget, our, our budget journey right now. And the goal is, we have two more marathon meetings on Saturdays that we will be going through budgets. And then we're going to be bringing our new budget for next year to council for, out for voting on, it'll be a three read. And everything has to be taken into consideration, our investments, our debts, the revenue coming in, right? So thank you very much.
Quite welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
I, I just have one more comment. We've always tried to have them come in about this time in the fall. So just so you two know that hopefully next year, right about this time, you'll be able to come back and, and we could see what, where we're at. Because we usually had a different group of folks come in, but I.
We're going to save this PowerPoint to see how the numbers hold true.
Oh, thank you for saying that.
I won't be here, I don't think.
You'll hold our feet to the fire, that's fantastic.
So that you know, we have three positions that are open, that tomorrow there will be a decision as to who, what, three of the six people who are running will be here. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
And is this something that, that you could email to?
Sure.
Council Clerk, Ross Maron? And that way, we have it available in case somebody would like to have a copy of it?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good, thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is going to be Steve Gross, Environmental Consultant of Verdantis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Hi, good evening. I'm Steve Gross with Verdantis. Certified professional environmental consultant, has been contracted with the city to work on the Avon Lake power plant. And kind of helped shepherd that project through, assuming it goes forward, through the voluntary action program with an NFA letter and a covenant not to sue from Ohio EPA. So I'm going to go through some information here, but really I want to hear from you on what your questions might be. I'll do my best to answer those, and if I can't, I will get that information. But these projects in general, power plants, steel mills, those kind of things are, are complicated projects and have a lot of different facets, and it, they take a long time. I think we're lucky here is that we're really now just getting started. It seems like we've been doing this for a number of years for some reason, but it, it's starting to move and it's starting to flow. That there has been a significant amount of work done at the site, you can drive by the site and see it. ALERG has done, you know, the asbestos removal, which was a, a huge undertaking out there, has managed the hazardous waste and waste materials, universal waste, enabled them to demolish the buildings. And then over the last several months, they've started to address some of the other environmental concerns as far as cleanups. Specifically, the treatment pond area and the oily pond area, that's been a big push over the last couple of months to finish up. There still needs to be a lot. I mean, you know, all this heavy work, and they've done a great job on the demolition. I've seen a lot of demolition and their contractors, actually, and I'm not talking about the smokestacks or the towers, just the infrastructure and the large buildings that they had. They did, they did a good job on that. However, we have a lot of work to do now, and it's, it's, I think it's the hard work. It's taking the information, the data, and really finding out what kind of environmental condition is this property in that the city feels comfortable to go ahead and say, yes, we want to close on this. We're not there yet, we have a lot to do. Some of the information looks good. We also see some information that we have to get more data to fully evaluate it and determine what the remedial options are. But with this, under the current cooperative agreement that we signed a while ago, it gave us the opportunity to work with ALERG's consultant, Deegan and Associates, to start collaborating and really get an idea of what the site looks like. They have been responsive to us. We started working in July or so and really started working more routinely in August in preparation of trying to get some additional Phase Two work done that we felt, you know, we had the opportunity to, to look at the data that was collected last year and, and the first part of this, of 2024. And we had the opportunity then to look at that and come up with some data gaps. It's not the end-all, because we haven't even done our Phase One yet, which will identify other areas on the property, most likely, that have potential environmental concerns that were going to have to be assessed. But it did give us the ability to kind of jumpstart this. And we looked at that, we requested from them probably another 50-plus borings out there and, and more samples. They agreed to that, they went out, I'll bet in September alone, August, September, they probably spent upwards of $200,000 or more just in the environmental work between Verdantis and what Deegan did. So I mean, a lot has been going on. That data is now coming in, and we'll have the opportunity then to take that information and start breaking it down into, you know, what does it really mean? What are the potential exposures to not just the commercial industrial land use, but to recreational land use? And where does it, you know, where does it fail standards? Where does it meet standards and what kind of remediation? So one thing I, I do want to mention on the ponds that was brought up earlier in public comment is that we had the opportunity to observe from that. And I can tell you, when I saw it even five, six years ago, working with another client that looked at this site, it does, you know, they do, did look bad. They were water treatment ponds and they had an oily sledge pond. And so as part of their remediation, what we observed anyway, that they went in there, characterized the, the material that was in it, isolated all the outfalls from there, removed all that material down to natural material on the primary and the secondary. And then on the oily pond, it has concrete sidewalls, they cleaned those and went down and excavated the bottom. Well, then they did their verification sampling. And this was all based on a plan that was agreed to between Deegan and Ohio EPA's surface water group under their closeout of the MPDS permit. Now, we have not seen that report, we've seen bits and pieces, some of that's on the share files. It, it's not a, like a compilation of what's been done. That's what I'm really interested in. I'm hoping to have that before the end of the year, before it goes final, so that we can take that information incorporated into what we asked them to do additionally along the banks and outwards of the pond, between the lake and the ponds, to get a clear picture if there's any kind of contamination that's leaving the ponds or have left the ponds historically, if there's slop or run over. So just know, I mean, we're not there, but we're doing all the right things to develop, to get that information, to really evaluate those issues. Something more recently that's done, it, it's not up on share files yet, but they did, and I mentioned this before, they were able to, after several discussions, run drone flights through the Powdermaker Creek Tunnel. And we did both high-res digital photography and thermal imaging. And that's the easy part, it took a day to get all that information, but now we have just tremendous amount of data. And they are in the process of compiling that so that it can be shared. And I think that'll go up on its own website, you know, for, under the end. And so that information is to come. I have had the luxury to look at some of that, not in its entirety, but we need to go through that whole process and look at the integrity and the structure, the material that's inside the, inside the tunnel, which actually, what I've seen is pretty clear, but we have, we have to evaluate that. Something that's important to notice or to note is that, you know, we've had this push of environmental assessment work. We asked them probably do another 50-plus soil borings on top of the 50 or 60 soil borings they already had, just in the 23 acres, excluding the remainder of the property. They have other work that's done there. It's my understanding, you know, that we will need to address that other area, but given the schedule and given the cooperative agreement, we focused really on this 23 acres in preparation and hope that we could have more information by the time we had the PSA. But I don't know that that matters as much on the PSA because the city's going to be in a position that if we look at this and we find these areas are just too great, or the contamination is something that, you know, the city doesn't want to take on, or the remediation, whatever that factor is, you always have the out card, but we're not there to figure that out. We will look at areas outside the 23 acres. The timing, I don't have at this point, because we're really focused on the, on the 23. And we know that that's going to require an NFA letter and a covenant not to sue. We don't know what the development would be on the remainder of the property or how that would be done. And it may be parceled out in pieces as they have developers that are interested in buying the land, we just don't know. But it is, what I was going to say is, it's important that, I think that there'll probably be limited environmental conducted over the next several months until they're comfortable and you're comfortable that this PSA can be agreed to and signed and moved forward because I really don't think they're going to spend the additional funds that we're requesting without some certainty. Now again, that's just kind of where I'm, and Todd could probably speak more to that. As far as timing, once we have the PSA in place.
If you could, PSA?
Yes, that's the purchase agreement that.
Okay, if you could spell it out for the people that are watching, you know.
Absolutely.
Alphabet soup, we're used to alphabet soup because we work for the government, but.
So it's, yeah, it's the purchase agreement that's in place now, that's going through the, well, the purpose of this discussion now. I did put together a draft schedule, but once that is in place, we'll be able to define better the milestones going forward and develop a much better schedule that we can then share and agree and work on between all parties, all stakeholders, kind of, you know, be involved in, in understanding where we are at any one point in the schedule. The way I'm trying to put it together is complete in progress, still unstarted. But I'm estimating that we'll have Phase Two assessment work done in spring of '26. And, and then we're planning to start our Phase One, assuming that the agreement gets passed, you know, December or as soon as we can. And that then provides us the ability to go in and look at all the historic documents, spend the time to come up with our own identified areas. And the identified areas are those areas that have known releases or suspected releases that need to be assessed. And so, you know, we don't, we're not relying on, on previous Phase One documents, or Phase One property assessments. We'll do our own, and I have to be able to sign off on that, to use that to prepare the NFA letter. But it's also used, is the no further action letter that the certified professional signs off and stamps. And then the city would request a covenant not to sue from the Director of Ohio EPA. That NFA letter is then submitted to Ohio EPA under affidavit from a certified professional, and it goes through their review and, and comment. So that's that process, you brought that up. So I have a couple notes here. Some of the things that we're looking at now is not just the 22 acres. We're teeing up, because this is, this is important how the property is used, is the submerged land base, or the submerged land area. We have to know what that looks like. It's really not part of this agreement, it's a separate project, but it hinges on property use and access around the property. So what we're in the process of doing is putting together a tentative scope of work to share with Ohio EPA to get funded under a targeted brownfield assessment grant, or they call it a TBA, to be able to go out and collect additional sediment samples, surface water samples out there off the shore, maybe even on the shore, it depends, we'll, we'll have that. We've been in communication with Ohio EPA, we have a basis scope, we're going to put that together. That'll be shared with this group as far as the scope of work and have EPA approve that. Now, Verdantis is an approved contractor consultant for Ohio EPA, but they also have others. It's not guaranteed at all that Verdantis will do the work. I had a project here this summer where it was just easier for EPA to say, okay, look, you're the certified professional on the project, you have work adjacent to your project in Ohio River, we're just going to have you guys do the contract because that way you're working internally to get the information you need to make decisions on your NFA letter, your no further action. So I can't guarantee that, but one of their, all our contractors' consultants are qualified. And I've worked with them on other projects, so that's not a stumbling block.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
The targeted assessment grant, do you need any consultmatic action on that? Do we need to pass a resolution? Do we need to have an ordinance or anything, or will you come to us if you need it? Because you've done this before.
I have. I have done it and not had an ordinance passed, but I don't know your charter on that. And so that would be a question, I guess. You would need an ordinance?
Would need an ordinance.
Okay, which, which, you know, when we get ready to, to put that application in, is that the time you need it or the time it gets granted?
No, that, put the application in, that way it's, it's all part of the process.
Well, we will get with you then to get that, you know, on the books and scheduled for that, because I'm sure it's an easy thing.
It's an easy task.
We will go ahead and do, I thank you for bringing that up because that was not on my radar as far as.
Thank you. And, excuse me, and Mr. Esborn, you're in the audience, you'll be letting public service know so we can process it for you? Okay, thank you. It's a committee thing, go ahead.
Okay. I mean, we're approved to do it?
No, I, I understand.
But we don't have the document, when we have the document, that's.
Yeah, it's the ordinance.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Something else we're looking into is other potential funding for this project. Outside of, you know, all the discussions we've had with TIFs and different things like that, we're also looking at what opportunities may be there for the city to gain funds through either Ohio Department of Development or other avenues. And then we'll bring that to the city.
And Steve, if you could, in order to apply for those, we need to have site control, correct?
Correct.
And this PSA being passed.
That would go a long way, yes.
And site control means that we would own it, so the.
No, no, you'd have an agreement in place, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, an agreement in place that we would be going through the, the agreement. Because you have to do your, your assessment, you have to tell us where we are, what needs to happen, right?
Right.
But I just want the public to understand what we need.
Likely the grant funding would be more for remediation because the assessment pieces, we're, we're more than midway through this assessment piece. So that's more likely is where that would be focused. Again, I, I don't know that for sure, but that's, it's in its beginning stages here. So that just, that kind of covers the general information. If there's other specific things that anyone has questions on, please ask me, like I said, this is for you to, to ask questions. And if I don't have the answer now, I'll certainly find the answers and provide it.
Thank you, I'm going to turn to my council members, Mr. Suber.
I'm glad you're talking about the property that's next to the property that we're going to be buying to get that information, because we really need that environmental information on, on those areas too. One of the areas that I'm looking at specifically is where the beach is now on the Power Plant property. Because I think that that's probably one of the most important areas for me that I'm looking at. I mean, because that's a pretty big beach that people are going to be able to use in the future. That's something that I think that we have to take a long look at environmentally.
And you're referring mainly to the beach, let's say, the western half of the coastline?
Right, the western half of the, where the, that we're purchasing there. Because that's a big beach area, I mean, we used to have a beach down there before, but, but that's a real area that I think that we need to do a lot of different testing on based on some of the different things I've heard has happened there in the past. So I think that if you could take an extra look at that area, and that's really all I have.
Absolutely, that's a focus area, because that's a concern of mine as well. When you look at it and you see how the property is going to be used, you can certainly go and get an NFA letter for the 23 acres. That's, that's no problem as far as, you know, assuming all the environmental, you meet all the applicable standards. But you're going to have access then, public access, and you're going to be providing that access to another area that could have potential problems. And that's always kind of been something that, that we've looked at internally as a, as an issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Mr. Gross a question before we move on, I apologize. For the public, can you explain the significance of a no further action lever, letter and a covenant not to sue? What does that mean to us as a community and us as a city? What does that enable us to do?
Okay, it's been called the gold stamp before, but basically, Ohio EPA has the voluntary action program, and it's a risk-based program for different receptors for a property. So you could have residential, you can have like a modified residential where you have apartments or condos, commercial and industrial. And each one of those has different standards to meet, either in soil, groundwater, air. So what, under the NFA letter process, is you have a certified professional that's certified through Ohio EPA to work as and with Ohio EPA, following the rules, to do assessment. And they're, they're very explicit, assessment, risk assessment and remediation. and they're, they're very explicit, assessment, risk assessment, and remediation. And using those, that program then, you can evaluate your site, conduct your remediation, either using active remediation, institutional controls, like stating, okay, this is a, this is a recreational land use, and you have to have specific standards for that, or it's gonna be commercial, industrial, and you have another set of standards. That's all memorialized within the NFA letter. And then there's also an environmental covenant that actually goes with the property, as part of the NFA letter package, that states what the property's gonna be used for. So, the NFA letter in itself is a compilation of all of the environmental work that's been done, and it's put not only in a checklist kind of form, but it's also in written form, and it has tables and a, a written narrative that provides a demonstration on how the site meets the applicable standards selected for that site. And the certified professional then takes the responsibility to sign that, stating that all the work has been done accurately, and following the regulations, and that the site meets this specific standard, or set of standards. It could be, you could, half of it could be commercial, and half of it could be residential. Once that NFA letter is written, then, as a CP, I would provide that to the city. The city would look at it and say, okay, we want a covenant not to sue from Ohio EPA, which releases the environmental liability for that site, based on the information that's covered and included within the NFA letter. And so they can't come back, EPA cannot come back then and do corrective action on those items within the NFA.
Thank you. Anybody else down here? Mr. Smith, please.
Yes. Thanks for coming in this evening. I want to make sure that I heard you right, and that was, that when it comes to the submerged land lease, that you're gonna be looking at getting grants through, for brownfields and things like that, for that area, even though you're not sure who's gonna be doing the work yet? Did I hear you right?
Well, the way, yes, the, the way it works is, Ohio EPA get, has funds within their targeted brownfield assessment grant, they're actually, I think, US EPA funds, but then you can go, a city, municipality, others can, can apply for this, and basically what it does is it provides the ability to go in and do a Phase One, possibly, if a, if a municipality doesn't have funds to do that. Let's say they wanna buy the local gas station, and, you know, it's blighted, that's kind of how it was set up, so they could go in and do this environmental work, maybe do a limited Phase Two. So we're doing a phase, we would ask for a Phase Two, to develop this plant to characterize surface water and sediments within the beach and offshore area.
And the question that I'm asking you is, because as I read the agreement, the city is not purchasing, or is not included, any of the submerged land, or probably not the beaches that he's talked about, that's probably all within the submerged land lease area. So what I'm questioning is, why would the city be involved in that? Why would the city wanna pay for any of that, when that's not gonna benefit us? It's gonna only benefit if they ever find one, an above-ground developer, who's probably gonna wanna try and do marinas, or who knows what they're gonna wanna do there. I just, I just don't see that, and I'm concerned that we, you know, it says even that we have to have access points to get to the beach areas, so I'm concerned about the submerged land leases, and what is gonna actually fall on us, and it sounds like you're gonna have some of this fall on us to, to do. So that's what my comment is.
Yeah, it, the impetus really was, the city was saying, what, what about the beaches? That was the question, that came from the board. What, what do you, I mean, and I'm talking, what, a year and a half ago?
Two years ago.
Or two years ago. And so that kind of started, okay, well, we're gonna get this property all set to go for recreational, but then we don't know about the beaches, and you're gonna have access now to the beaches. So that's, that's where it started.
Yeah, but I mean, we have no control over that, that's not part of what we're getting with the, the PSA. Thank you.
If, if, can we, can you freeze this, and you can come up after we're done? Or do you wanna come up now and take care of that particular question? Mr. Davis is one of our other consultants.
Let's address Mr. Smith.
Okay, then come on up if you was, if they can hear you.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Thank you. I didn't want to lurch in on your time.
No, I, I wanna address that.
Thank you.
No problem. Todd Davis, outside Environmental Council to the City for Brownfield redevelopment. So, the reason, a couple of issues, and it's a good question. Number one, we know what the purpose of our acquisition is, is recreational use, we understand that part of the next phase, and it's actually anticipated in the purchase agreement, is to take a look at the submerged land lease as a next step, assuming we get past this first step. So certainly, the question's gonna be, what about, what about the sediment? Because people are gonna presumably go into the lake and swim in the lake, and may have access to the sediment as they're walking out, and what about the beach, as Casey pointed out. So, you know, what the goal is, is to get grant funding, which is available through, through this grant process, to collect that information, Ohio EPA is completely supportive of that.
Mr. Smith, continue.
But we have no control over it, because we're not getting that, that's not part of what we're buying.
It, it's, that's true.
It's specifically excluded, yeah.
It's, it is specifically excluded from this agreement, but also, a provision in the agreement states that we'll anticipate looking at the submerged land lease as a next, as a potential next step.
So then the question becomes, how much is that gonna cost us to take over all of that, and how much extra money is it gonna be to do that?
Yeah, so, those are the next questions, for sure, and we don't have the answers to that, but we wanna get at least preliminary information to understand, are there significant issues in the lake? Are there significant issues in the beach? I'll also point out that it's highly likely that ALRG has no responsibility whatsoever off of the, the properties defined, which they acquired. So liability in connection with impacts to the lake, or impacts to the beach, which are not, I, I don't know what their underlying liability is, I've been told, that they excluded that in their purchase agreement. So that would be a, a separate reason to go in and do that investigation, working hand in hand with Ohio EPA, to make sure that everything's safe.
Mr. Smith, continue.
So then, who, who, who's, who's in charge? Who, who owns the submerged land leases?
So the submerged, so as a part of the lease, so as a part of the lease, it is currently leased by ALRG, but the responsibility for having, and I'll explain this as well, the responsibility for historical releases and that portion of the site, which is not a portion that we're buying, is a very complicated question, and something that, you know, may involve a number of prior owners of that power plant over time. So undoubtedly, step one is, we need to investigate it and see if there are issues or problems, and, and that have to be identified and addressed, and then second, what's the responsibility? How do we clean it up? How much is it gonna cost? Those are our next steps as part of this process.
And if we could just wait a second, Ms. Gentry, go ahead.
I have a, thank you.
Okay, and just one moment, please. So, what you opened up, a topic though, was the beach. If, we all know the wind shifts in Lake Erie, and if we want to maintain a beach or have a beach, perhaps the area that's out in front, that is adjacent to the land, may not be stopping the wave action, the way that the city might want to utilize a beach. Also, there could be erosion issues on the shoreline, that your investigations are going to be directing us or someone else, and how they're going to be developing the east side of the, of the shoreline, or the, the west side of the shoreline. So it, it all really does work together. It, it really does. Ms. Gentry?
So, that property is a fundamental key piece of this endeavor. I can't comprehend how we can do an agreement without understanding whether or not we can actually use the lake.
So if I may, just like everything else, we have to do our investigation in due diligence, you gotta start with it.
I don't wanna purchase this property unless I know for sure that we can utilize the beach.
Right. Ms. Gentry, let him finish, please.
Signing, signing the purchase and sale agreement does not mean that you're purchasing the property. As, as we've discussed historically, and we'll go over again, there's a long investigation process, which Steve just, just identified, which includes extensive sampling, collaboration with Ohio EPA, making sure that the property is safe for our intended use, and at that point, we'll present that information, or Steve will present the information, to make sure that all of these issues have been addressed before you buy the property.
Will we have both sets of data before the final agreement and purchase of...
That's the goal.
Yeah, my opinion is, you would want it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's not an opinion.
And if we could go back in time, just so that we're, we're clear, for Ms. Gentry and everybody else, and the audience and all of us, the final to purchase where she's at, that could be a year from now, that could be eighteen months from now. The only thing that we're looking at closing out soon is the ability to move forward.
You. All you're doing is, you're executing an agreement that gives us the ability to control the site, and to do future investigation. It doesn't contain any other obligations. If, after this investigation is complete, the city decides that it doesn't wanna purchase any portion of the property, it has an absolute right to terminate the agreement.
And, and with... If I could, I think all of us want the additional investigation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
With the TIF, the, with the TIF fund, so let's say that it, it's determined that there's a lot of, of remediation required in that land lease, the sub...
Submerged land lease.
Submerged land lease, thank you. Is, and ALRG is not responsible for that, and we can't get grants, because it's not a guarantee that we'll get a grant, then we would be left with property that we cannot utilize, the beachfront property, is that...
That, that's a significant issue, no, no question. We have to make sure that, that the beach and the sediment, right outside the beach, any place where anyone could potentially come into contact, from, from a recreational perspective, is safe, period, hard stop, no other issue.
One more question about the TIF. Would TIF funds be utilized for the submerged land lease remediation at all?
Not as currently contemplated. It's, it's not that, if there's a, a separate agreement, could it potentially be included? It could potentially be included, but that's not part of the current structure of the state.
I'm done, thank you.
Anyone else?
I may add to that, though.
Oh, yes, go ahead, please.
As far as the dollars to remediate, remediate the submerged lease area, there are other programs within the state, as it deals with Lake Erie sediments, and that would have to be explored. But the issue is, it's primarily owned by ODNR, right?
It's owned by the state.
Yeah.
So the state, so again, these are waters of the state, anything below the ordinary high-water mark, which includes the beach, is owned by the state of Ohio. So, believe me, Ohio EPA and ODNR are gonna be as concerned a, a, as we are, in connection with this issue and the investigation, that's why they're supporting grant funding to take a, a first look.
In my discussions, my early discussions with EPA, they already had some discussion with ODNR and how this works, and that it would be a collaborative agreement or, or issue, when we come up to do the actual assessment work. So I mean, that's why, you know, we kind of took the initiative to go ahead and let's, let's pursue this grant, because some, we have to know this. I mean, we have to know this information.
Absolutely. Mr. Cause, your hand was up. If we, Mr. Cause's hand was up.
If, if he has a follow-up.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Smith? Go ahead, please.
But somebody's got the lease, but we don't know who it is, on the submerged lands, right?
No, ALRG.
ALRG, I thought you said...
ALRG is the less sea.
They're the less sea.
But they don't own, they're, they're not responsible.
I, I understand, but they're the less sea.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. But we, we are not, and we are not anticipated as becoming that less sea under the, the purchase agreement.
What, what we said under the purchase agreement is that we would evaluate, we would evaluate it as a next step. There's no obligation, there's no affirmative obligation to do other, other than evaluate. We don't have to buy it, we don't have to take over the lease, no obligation whatsoever.
But the, the answer is, it is not part of our agreement, correct?
It is not part of the acquisition.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cause, now, your turn.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I have a couple of things. First one, it's kind of just wrapping some of this up in my, in my mind. So, what I, what I'm hearing, and what I've heard from the beginning of this, almost two years ago, longer, is that, with regards to environmental, all of this is really contingent upon the city being satisfied with the environmental studies, before there's any full acquisition, full ownership by the city, that Steve Gross, who is our environmental consultant, working with Verdantis, who represents the city, not the developer of the city, working on our behalf, we have to be fully comfortable with what has been presented, and have it be contingent upon the city being comfortable with this before, for the final ownership of this property. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. So, that covers the purchase agreement that is in the reading process right now as well. Two, is that if we get environmental news that is not to our liking, and we have a sudden shift, and this is just too much, or whatever it might be, whatever the reason might be, we're just not comfortable with it. The city could walk away from it. We're not bound by a vote on that purchase agreement, should it pass in a couple of weeks. We can be uncomfortable with the environmental studies and how it's proceeding, and say, this is just not for us.
You, you don't have an obligation to close on the transaction.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's one part. The second part of my comments is, Steve, you talked about Phase One and Phase Two, you talked about Phase Two beginning in spring of 2026, and then you said a Phase One could be beginning in December of 2025? Maybe I missed it, but could you explain to me, what is Phase One, and what is Phase Two?
Yes. And what I said about the Phase Two is that we hope that it would be completed by then, by... But doesn't mean there wouldn't be another phase to it, because that, that's not uncommon. But a Phase One is more of a literature-type desktop evaluation. So you're taking all the information that you have available through FOIA's, through site files, conversation, whatever. You take all of that information and put it together, and develop where you have potential release areas or known release areas. You also put in, you know, property boundaries, and it's basically a summary document of all the potential environmental issues that are at the site. And then, the Phase Two generally is structured based on the conclusions of the Phase One. But under the voluntary action program, as a component of the NFA letter, you have to have a voluntary action program level Phase One, which is different than, say, ASTM, you know, like, like if you did a property acquisition, and you went out and got a Phase One, environmental site assessment. It has a different weight to it, under the program, but it's used then to structure the Phase Two work. And also, at the end, you would update it to kind of say that, all right, we did all this work, and now we've, we've met these metrics that were required within the original Phase One.
Okay. And, so, this is, both of these are continuation of the remediation process, the environmental process on us, and plus you talked about the borings and all that other stuff that has been going on. So if, again, we have this purchase agreement that we have up for second reading next week, if the city decided to walk away from the purchase agreement and be done with this, what happens with the Phase One, Phase Two, and remediations?
We're basically, we, myself, Verdantis is out of the process.
So it's all done.
Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, thank you.
So, you wouldn't see me up here anymore.
Anything else, Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
If I may, I've got a number of questions, and I'll start with the easiest first.
Good.
So the NFA, we discuss about a lot of different things, but that 23 acres, do we have a conceptual plan of what that 23 acres is going to be?
We do not. I would love a conceptual plan of what that would be, because what it does is, you can do it without it. A lot of times it's more conservative, it's a little difficult, but it'd be nice to know, and that's one of the cogs in the wheel that we have to make sure we have, is it helps you build your remediation plan around it, because you know what the property is going to be used. It may be you have an area that is going to have soils brought in, and it doesn't need a construction excavation worker exposure, meaning that there's, let's say there's lead in the soil at 300, which fails that. So knowing what the final grade might be, or approximate final grade, we can then develop our remedial plan around that, either relocate soils, stabilize them, take them off-site, whatever, there's, you know, there's a lot of options.
If I may, I mean, thank you for that answer. I mean, that's, my question is to the administration, what is our plan for that 23 acres, and why haven't we declared it to our environmental consultants?
When you say plan, are you talking a park plan, are you talking a survey?
No, 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 it's a plan. What, are we going to use it as park and beach, are we gonna, because we keep discussing NFA, and we talk about, well, if we build on it, you could build this or that. The discussion has been, it's going to be parkland access to the beach, so why don't we declare that as the NFA conceptual and move on? I mean, I'm-
I'll let you answer.
I think I can answer your question. So our understanding, based on discussions with the administration, is that the 23 acres will be dedicated to park. It's not going to be residential, we're not going to redevelop it for other uses, it's going to be a park area. I think what Steve's, I know he's trying to be very specific about his answers, but it's going to defer, so if there are portions of that area that are going to have even more extensive exposure pathways, then we're going to make sure, it would be nice to know exactly what the park plan is now, but we, so what we're going to do is, assuming that this moves forward, we'll start some preliminary discussions. We've already had discussions about retaining a landscape architect and a park designer to start coming up with a conceptual plan, so we can build on it as we go through the due diligence process.
Okay, so if we can then state that this is going to be parkland, 23 acres, because I hear references to residential, I hear reference to other things besides it being a park. So then, if I may, we've got park, we've got paths, bikes, walking, we've got daylighting of Powdermaker Creek. Am I correct? These are concepts that we've discussed.
So the daylighting of Powdermaker Creek is something that, working with, like, with the metro parks, we're hopeful that we can do that as part of the budget, as part of the future development. That's right, we're hopeful, but we'll evaluate Powdermaker Creek in connection with the NFA for the 23 acres, that's for sure.
So we would have some conceptual idea of what the risk-based criteria for that area is going to be.
Yes.
It's going to be parkland, and it's going to be beach access potential and sector, so we can develop a conceptual.
Yes.
Accordingly. So can we develop that conceptual? I mean, that, to me, is fundamental to the data that we're collecting.
He's going to defer to the most conservative approach if we don't have a plan to support something less conservative.
So-
Yes, by the time I break, I want to stamp the no further action letter. We don't have the remediation done, I'm going to have to look at areas that are in compliance and areas that aren't, and then we'll have to do some kind of temporary remediation until we go ahead and develop the property as we plan under the TIF, I guess.
And as a reminder, we've already said, and we've said multiple times, we're going to be working with Ohio EPA and technical assistance as we go through this process, so if there's questions about, you know, these are good questions, there are questions about this, we will discuss them with Ohio EPA before Steve's in a position to issue his no further action letter.
So, if I may ask you, Steve, we discussed the potential of split samples the last time we talked.
Yes.
Is that something that you guys looked at?
We actually, I brought that up with Deegan to schedule that the next time that we're out there. We did observe sampling. We've also, when we did work across the street, we did split samples with them. I feel fairly confident that their, you know, their field staff is experienced, they're taking the right samples where they're supposed to be. We did do some site visits, but I heard you, and I took that message to Deegan, that future field work, that will be split samples.
Mr. Shamir, can I stop you for a second? For the audience's benefit, can you explain what a split sample is? Thank you.
A split sample is any time you collect either a soil sample, or a groundwater sample, or surface water sample, that you take duplicate samples. Generally, it's one consultant takes a sample, another takes the same sample. The issue you run into with soils is soils are so variable, you can take them next to each other, and there's going to be a variation sometimes. So you just have to be very smart and very pragmatic about doing these split samples.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shamir, continue.
Yes, so that is something that you guys have considered. Do you guys have someone on site that regularly visits and oversees the activity, or is it just Deegan and Associates?
No, they were only out for a week, and we had someone out there during the day. We just kind of randomly picked the day to go out and observe when they did the work in September. We haven't been able to do any other work prior to that, because that was all done before we were involved. So I have to verify the data under the program as a certified professional and sign off on that. We're still in the process, I mean, there's a lot of data, and we have a whole verification process that we have to go through, like, just example, every so many data, we have to verify that data. So that's whole part of the process for Verdantis to do. But, you know, until we get further down the road, we're not going to spend that money.
Understand, so there was an earlier comment made that I have not received information. It took about seven weeks, but I have been receiving information, and thank you for sending that information over. So that information is now flowing through. You mentioned that April 2026, the phase two assessment would hopefully come to an end, and that is the work that Deegan is doing.
Yes.
And then you guys anticipate doing your work, your phase one, December of 2025?
Starting, absolutely, yes. And it's, you know, it could be a 30 to 60-day process. This is a lot of information. This will be a big phase one for this project. I've seen the data room, like I said, gosh, you know, six years ago or better. I don't know where all that information is, but it's going to be a big project.
So are you guys reviewing the data now, or are you going to wait until later to review that data?
We review the data to get a sense of what's going on. You mean, when I say, when you say data, do you mean?
Historical.
Analytical data.
Analytical data, historical data, geological data that's been collected by Deegan and Associates to date.
We have looked at it, we haven't done a deep dive, other than our initial data gap evaluation to say, okay, here's areas that I feel are going to be significant, identified areas. Where are the borings out here? What is, what is the laboratory data saying that it is? You know, do we need more data zero to two? Do we need data, you know, deeper than that, six feet, that kind of? So we've done that on what was provided before September. Now we have to go back, put that all back in our database, and now see where it falls out, and we have not done that yet.
So I, and again, you know, you know the As and Zs of this business in and out, and sorry for my questions, it's just for my clarity. When we discussed the covenant not to sue, effectively, the covenant not to sue is allowing the city to develop the land as a park in the future, and anything that may happen post-remediation, the city will not be liable for. Is that correct? I'm just trying to get a clarity.
Yes, and Todd can, from a legal aspect, he can fill that in too, but from the environmental aspect of it, is that covenant not to sue covers the information that's in the NFA letter and the chemicals of concern? So let's say you have a site out there, and you get a covenant, and you're building a building or something, you hit an underground storage sink that wasn't there. You just address that then, under the same preview that you have for the NFA letter, and the same standards and exposure pathways. I mean, that happens all the time. When we did all these, this work from Clean Ohio years ago, a funding process, you know, we cleaned up all these sites, well then, you know, five, 10 years later, they come in and do a development, and it wasn't uncommon to maybe hit a tank or a line or something like that and have to go back in and address it. But it does give you liability, I don't know, from a legal aspect.
Yeah, it's, the covenant not to sue represents a release of liability from Ohio EPA for additional investigation or remediation consistent with the property's current use.
Or corrective action.
Or corrective action.
So, when it comes to those three ponds, or two ponds, whatever, you want to categorize them upfront, on the lakeside, has there been any indication from older reports or any operational indication of leakage from those ponds?
I have not seen anything that shows that.
Okay.
But again, we have not done our phase one.
Were those contained ponds, all of them lined?
No, there was some clay in the one, the oily pond was a concrete-lined pond, and the concrete looked in good shape even when we were out there, but they power washed and cleaned all that, and then they dug out the bottom, and then they did their verification sampling based on the MPDS closeout document requirements. And then with the primary and the secondary, after they characterized the material that was in the ponds, they over-excavated the ponds, and then they did a series, a network of verification samples, probably midway and then at the base, and then we came in and asked them to do them along the ridge, just, you know, so we didn't have, like, flow over or something that we missed.
Thank you for that information, and the reason I'm asking is, looking at historical photos of that area, the geologic information before the information that you guys sent forth, this was information that they provided, ALERG provided during CIC meetings, showed that the area underneath the pond has consolidated or undisturbed material. However, photos, historical photos, show that that area is a fill. And is that something that we're looking at?
The material that they, it was unconsolidated material that was sampled, it wasn't the shale, because it was probably, the one side looked like it was weathered shale in fact, and then there was some fill material that they sampled.
To the east?
Yes.
And then further west, it still showed as bedrock or virgin material? And the reason I'm asking is, is I'm wondering if you guys took a look at that during the discussions for the phase two that is going on?
We did soil borings and looked at the soil boring data and what was already previously done, to kind of fill in, to get an idea of what the geology looked like around the ponds.
I thank you, I've got two more questions, and I'll leave that be.
Take your time.
So, on the issue of submerged land lease, I, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly, it needs to be sampled, and it really is tied back into what happens with the land. I mean, the concept has always been, within city council and administration, we are doing this because people want access to the beach. So access to the beach means access to a beach, making sure that it is safe for people to be able to utilize it, it's just not an extension of the park that is further west coming in further east. So, that program for the assessment, the program, the proposed funding for the assessment of the submerged land lease, is that something that is going to happen? Is there a likelihood for it to happen? And when would that take place?
I believe there is a very good likelihood that that would happen as far as getting grant funding. I mean, talking with EPA, they were very excited about it, they know what the risks are, they know what the concern is from the city related to that, or just, you know, anyone. So I think that's a very good, I was, been told it's a very good possibility that we can get that grant funding. And when would it take, or when would it happen? My guess would be it'd be spring of '26, because it takes a couple months typically to get it through the program and get it approved, and get the scopes of work approved. Then it's, we have weather issues, so it's not going to happen until spring.
So what sort of funding amount are we looking at?
You know, typically, they do it on the lower end, but, and I don't have a number, so-
I mean, ballpark, because I-
I would say 20 to 30.
Thousand.
Thousand, maybe a possibility, and so we, you know, we'll have to do it in a way that we get enough samples that gives us a good idea. That doesn't mean that's the end-all of all sampling out there, but here's an opportunity under this TBA grant to get funds to go out and get an idea of what's going on on the beach and out, and we can do a grid that's, you know, comprehensive enough to give us a really good idea of what we have out there.
So, we had a $300,000 grant, which one day it's used by Avon Lake Regional Water, one day it's not. Why can't we utilize that fund?
Because of the state's involvement in the land. They would not be eligible for that grant funding.
Not even on the beachfront?
Not, not if, no.
Okay.
But there are, but there are other-
Oh, yeah.
There are many other potential sources of funding to do investigation and remediation in Lake Erie, if that's an issue.
So 20 to 30,000, it's large, I mean, I look at, when you tell me it's 20 to 30,000, there is a problem.
It's probably going to be a little bit more than that.
Yes.
It's enough to get an initial-
Boat out there?
Snapshot.
Well, we don't have any samples out there.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I'm looking at, I mean, when I came up with this, it's like, what can we do to at least have some kind of information that says if we have something, you know, really bad, or, you know, not so bad, what's kind of a snapshot of its current conditions based on historic use of the properties?
Just a comment, when will that drone data be available?
I asked that, the, I asked that actually yesterday or today, and they just uploaded drone flights of the site for October, that's the aerials. They're having problems due to the size of the files, and they're going to create its own website or its own share site, so it doesn't corrupt or it doesn't crash the other. I'm hoping within a week. I was expecting it before now, because I'm anxious to look at it, it's very interesting, and-
Yeah, I'd love to see it, because I'd like to compare to, to the photos I've seen of inside that, of the Powdermaker ditch, the plugs. I mean, I would love to see what the plugs look like and what the conditions are. Now, this is the final, we talked about additional funding mechanisms, and the reason we need site control is to obtain additional funding mechanism. The only funding mechanism that could be had additionally would be remediation, correct? What other funding mechanisms do we have?
Well, it's remediation, it's potential for additional demolition, site grading, additional investigation on the property if we need to, those are the eligible expenses, the categories.
You know, the concrete pads that we've discussed in the past, that would fall into that, that process, that would cover those.
Are we talking concrete pads that are foundations?
Anything, we can include it all.
Yeah.
Well, those foundations, I mean, you can't get them out unless you have a deep, deep, deep pocket. I mean, I'm wondering what concrete pads are we talking about outside of the foundations?
There's a figure that shows the location of those. There is a figure that shows the location of those and I can help direct you to that.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
It's, it's the second figure in the draft agreement.
Oh, well, that's better. I wasn't thinking of that one, so.
Thank you. That's it.
For somebody who understands, on these large concrete slabs, generally, Mr. Schmier is correct. You don't necessarily take them out because you can't, but a lot of times we'll bust them down to four or five feet so that they're not in the way of future utility work.
Thank you. Ms. Gentry?
Does anyone know what is happening with the transformer room?
Building.
Building?
Yeah, right now, it's currently carved out of the purchase agreement.
Yeah, I wanted to make that point that our public brought up the fact that we're taking responsibility if we're not. That's still a property of Aler. We're not taking that property.
But do we know what they're doing, their plans are?
They're, they're marketing it. So they're marketing it with, with all due respect. I mean, whatever contamination is found on the site, I mean, this is a big old industrial coal-fired power plant. Whatever's found can be remediated. And it's a question of cost and time. You know, we've done a lot worse than this plant, I can tell you that for a fact. And many times over, so it's nothing to be intimidated about, but consistent with Councilman Schmier's questions, we need to be meticulous about it. And we need to address every potential concern that we can think of. We, we need to collaborate with Ohio EPA so that you're comfortable a- as a city council that we should do this acquisition.
Mr. Zuber?
May I add to Todd's? Also, when we see a building like that or a potential source area and it's off property, and we've already done this. So we went along those areas, there was some above-ground storage tanks and some underground storage tanks. And a, and a storage pad that's right on the edge of the property, what I'm assuming is gonna be the edge of the property. So we went in there and had dig and do additional soil sampling so that we know what would be coming on if there was anything on the property. Just so we would have that data. And we're, we're obligated to do that under the VAP. You have to look at both onsite and offsite source areas.
Mr. Zuber?
One question, if you could talk a little bit about the insurance policy that we are named as a named insurer? Because I think that that's, point hasn't been brought up, but I think the public would really like to hear more about that.
Sure. Environmental insurance is, is, I use it in every transaction.
If you could speak this way so you could be picked up by the TV.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So environmental insurance is a very common tool i- in brownfield redevelopment and other transactions. Aler got a policy to protect itself against potential issues that were unidentified in the context of their investigation, which will also, they'll name the city, if this agreement moves forward, as an additional named insured onto that policy. That gives us the rights to participate in that policy and with the policy, the way these agreements are structured. They've done their investigation, they provided information to the environmental insurance company. The insurance company, based on the reports that were tendered to the insurance company, will carve out from the policy all known contamination on the site. But if there are things that have not been identified and we find out during the, the future investigation and even after the remediation process, the environmental insurance will respond and pay for the cost of investigation and cleanup of that, that, that new contamination, so to speak.
And how long is it for?
It's a fifteen-year policy. I'm sorry, it's a ten-year policy that, that goes through twenty thirty-six.
Any else, Mr. Zuber? Mr. Arnold, anything?
No, just to follow up to that, did, what was the cost? Did they absorb the cost of that policy?
They haven't shared what the cost of the policy was to us.
But is it, is it a term policy? I mean, is it-
It's a term for ten years.
Okay.
Typically, so obviously the highest risk on these policies is through the, the remediation process. After we've done the investigation, gotten the NFA and presumably covenant not to sue, you can still perpetuate that insurance coverage in the future even through, once this ten-year policy expires. And typically, it, it's much, much cheaper than the initial policy. Because you've done all of that investigation necessary to reduce the risk.
I have one, one other question.
Go ahead, Mr. Arnold.
Todd, last time you, you spoke, you talked about the due diligence time period of about a year. Can you guys speak to, outside of phase two being completed in the spring? What other due diligence would be done over the course of the following six months then?
Yeah, so it's gonna be Steve taking the investigate, taking all that data, comparing it to applicable standards, doing what's called a preliminary risk assessment, which is basically seeing how the, the data in the different areas compare to those standards, sharing that with Ohio EPA, making sure that they agree with any questions that, that Steve or Deegan collectively may have. There needs to be additional investigation during that process. That's the timeframe in which you would conduct that additional investigation. And then you would, they would perform remedial activities potentially during that timeframe as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Arnold? Mr. Mayor, anything else?
A, a couple of things. I want to close the gap a little bit on the submerged land lease because in the past, Councilman Schmier has rightfully brought up the concern of Powdermaker Creek and the sediment outside Powdermaker Creek. We talked about analyzing the area off the beach. I assume that we would include in this initial assessment areas outside the outfall for Powdermaker Creek, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're, we're clear on that.
No, we would look at any areas that we feel suspect to offsite contaminate. Because that would be considered offsite contamination. And it, it's not all necessarily just because it's that outfall considered a source from Powdermaker Creek. Because during like the, the recent release, luckily, the weather conditions were, were good to keep that contained. But you had material coming in that kind of locked it from going out into the lake, which is very fortunate.
Correct. Can you talk about how Ohio Technical Assistant fits into our schedule and where that will fall in the process?
Yes, and I've used it on many big projects. It, it just kind of helps the process go smooth, especially if you have complications or when you have so many stakeholders. It kind of gives a, it's an equalizer as far as getting the information and having it settled. But what I anticipate is that we would go ahead, our first step under Technical Assistance would be to develop the property-specific standards for recreational land use, because they have to be calculated. We need to kind of understand what areas of the park are gonna be used for what. And we can act as, you know, we can go in conservatively and come up with exposure time. So we'll do that first. And then as we get into issues with the phase two and coming up with remedial plans, typically that's when I'll go in. But I have a, my approach is to have a summary of information so that EPA kind of gets an idea of what's going on at a particular site. But then have a recommended remedial approach on how we're gonna address each one of those issues. For example, the Brook Park facility in Cleveland, that's exactly how we did that. We did that over a year. We had monthly meetings with EPA just to go through, you know, an item at a time. I'm not necessarily saying that that's what we have to do here because this is not as complicated. But we do want to bring them in on the ground floor so that when we get this done, everybody's satisfied. And then when the NFA letter is completed and submitted for a covenant, there's no surprises. And we've already talked about the issues.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, that's okay.
Just to correct, correct one thing. The policy is, it's a ten-year policy. I think it was purchased in twenty twenty-two when they did the acquisitions opposed to twenty thirty-two.
Twenty thirty-two, thank you. I have some questions, thank you. It's, you know, when you facilitate a group, you're listening to everybody and you say, okay, they've already asked that, they've already asked that. Then you come down to what I would like to talk about. And I'm gonna take you back to the oily pond that's over there on the east. So there's, it's concrete, it's dry, there's nothing in there, it's been power washed or whatever and they dug out the base and all that. Could that not be utilized, because it's been brought up by our residents, you know, that it could be there? Could that not be utilized, put more concrete in there, fill it up and, and put, put soil and water in there and make it into like a wetland area? I mean, could that not be utilized that way?
I'm sure it could be.
I mean, is that something that, is that's part of a park, right?
Should we go through, so again, this is a whole next step as part of the process is park design. And what the community wants to see is part of that, that redevelopment.
Right.
So.
So I'm just gonna list a few things because there's been a lot of discussion in the community that hasn't come to the floor here because not everybody wants to come up here and, and talk about it. They do talk to all of us. And there's a lot of interest in an ice rink somewhere along there that could be utilized in the wintertime. There's, there's interest in, if you're gonna have an ice rink, well, then what is it during the summer, you know? Maybe it's a place that has, you know, benches around it. Maybe there's vendors that you could purchase coffee or you could, you could purchase other items while you're enjoying watching the lake and, and doing what you're doing. There's, there's people that are interested in like a boardwalk throughout there. And those types of developments would happen after, way down the road. Was that part of what the TIF would be paying for or is that something we would be going out for a grant?
It's specifically, it's specifically included in the TIF.
Okay. I'm gonna keep going, okay? It's been mentioned that perhaps there could be, let's say, a museum or a glass bottom boat could go out there and be looking at the wrecks. So we could be having, if the water's good and it's safe, there could be scuba diving classes out there beyond that area because there's maps of where there's a lot of wrecks. Is that something that would be involved in what you folks would be looking at? The water, being able to get underneath the water?
Well, that, that's a, that's a very big question because now you're into the lake and you can't control the lake. And that's definitely state water, our waters of the state. We would be more concerned about nearshore water quality.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna keep going, okay, because there are a lot of ideas out there. There's been people that have asked, is there an ability for the city to put a building up that there, there, there might be a restaurant there that we would be leasing it out so that there would be funds coming in? Because it's been mentioned by some of my colleagues that if you have a park, there's no tax money coming in. But we all know, you know, places called Mahogany State Park and Hocking Hills, where they do make money, you know, off of the, off of their park land. Is that something that we could be looking at?
So if you're the owner of the property and you acquire it, it's your property, just like if it was your private property and had appropriate zoning and the city wants to do it, you can develop.
Right, but we have to get electricity to it, we have to get-
All those things are possible and, and, you know, that's why, as Councilman Schmier pointed out, you know, having the next phase of, of planning certainly would be helpful. But as long as we remediate to those standards, we pretty much can do whatever you want as, as an owner of property.
I have two more and then I'm done. We're gonna go back to the building that is not being sold to us. And it has been mentioned tonight by residents. And it has to be the transformer building where they used to have the trains bringing the old transformers. Transformers would go upside down and the oil would come out, it'd go into the pit. And then it would be, you know, dealt with and they would either refill the transformer or they would get rid of the transformer, whatever they were gonna do. But that's the transformer building that we're talking about. The, the area around there, anything to do with the transformer? And it's been suggested possibly there was leakage going out into the other areas. How would you know to contain that if we're not gonna be owning it? If, if that's part of what ALERG is selling to others?
Are you referring to like future contamination or future migration?
Migration of what might be there now that could go out, could migrate in the future.
In general, just to lay the groundwork, PCBs generally do not migrate very far from source areas, just in general. But we are looking adjacent to that on the twenty-three acres to see how it might be impacted.
Okay.
I, we, we don't have a lot of data right now that we've seen in that building and adjacent to the building to the, let's say, south and east.
And then my last question. So we've talked about that this is a process. And that right now, what's before us is something to, that, that we're being asked to signs. We can continue going through the process, giving you the ability to do your phase two and to discover what else is there and how it could be remediated. And allowing ALERG to actually, you know, remediate and do what they need to do. So then we come down to use. And so at what point in time, Todd, do we begin discussing zoning? Because right now it's industrial and we're talking about, we want use that's recreational. Well, how does that fit into this? And, and how does it fit into the timetable of the purchase?
So, so assuming the purchase agreement gets signed, there's an affirmative obligation in the purchase agreement to start the process. City council and Aler is gonna have to start the process. Come to planning commission and to council and follow the, the ordinary process in order to get the property rezoned.
So this would be next October, I mean, next summer? I mean, I'm not sure I understand the timetable.
I, my understanding is that they're gonna come in-
In January?
Right, as soon as possible to start that process. That's my understanding. I mean, I, I, I don't control them, but that's what I would do if I were, was the developer.
Because this, we, we need to know, you know, what that timetable is.
Exactly.
And, and I, I also just want the public all to know. The two of you on your own and together have done multiple brownfields, turned them around and made them into usable property. And you just want to list a couple that people might say, hey, I know about that. Like for example, in Columbus, and you, do you want to talk about that just a little bit so people understand that this isn't the only thing that you guys have ever seen?
No, it's not. I think I have maybe thirty-eight or, or something like that, maybe more. NFA covenants on my, in my portfolio. But some of the ones, like Brook Park is the one I'm really proud of, but.
The, the former casting plant?
Correct. And then a big foundry in Columbus, it was Buckeye Steel. That was a very challenging project and now it's been fully developed. Grandview Yard in Columbus, between Good Ale and all the way to Third, it was two different ones back to back. It was multi-industrial, small facilities and it took that through. And then that one's interesting because it does apply to one of your earlier questions. Is that we, the first time we took it through, we did commercial industrial because that's what the market was. The market changed. And so Nationwide then wanted to come back and say, well, we want to do mixed-use residential and office space. And so we were able to go in and modify the covenant not to sue to include that, a higher use of the property.
And there's a video online if anybody wants to see it. It's very interesting about that particular project too.
Yeah, I think I've seen that.
Yeah, there's a video online.
Anyway, that's.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmier, sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I always have things that pop up. I want to challenge you on the issue of PCBs not migrating far because PCBs do migrate when there's fracture controls. And understanding fracture geometry geologically has a big impact on the migration of PCBs. And I'll give you prime example. You go down to Lenore, Tennessee. There was PCB release which was fracture controlled and ended up in the lake. So these are issues that we just need to ensure do not take place. And, and, and my previous life, I dealt with Dean Apple remediation. So that is, that is something that I have seen move beyond the point of release based on fracture geometry.
And I've worked with quite a bit of Dean Apple projects regionally. And I do have a good feel for that and the type of geology and shale and shale fracturing and there's a big difference in that. But, and I know you and I will be having conversations.
So that said, I, I've got a couple of questions and comments. The issue of the person that has brought up non-revenue generating TIF of thirty million dollars, that's me. So I will declare it right here. And I don't think with a coffee shop or a restaurant, you will generate any revenues that will offset the TIF of thirty million dollars. I will be clear and I will make that comment from now till eternity. Now, the other component is, I would like to know if beyond the environmental, are we gonna discuss the PSA outside of that or not?
I mean, it's your, it's your council, but we wanted to focus on environmental today, but we will have the future conversations in all that detail.
So what, what we thought we would do is that, there's so many questions that if we could keep this one to environmental and is it in two weeks, we're gonna come back, is it a week or two weeks?
Two weeks.
In two weeks, we're gonna come back and we're gonna deal with the other one. So we can, we can really get down into the, the details of it. We thought that this would be very beneficial for the public because there's only so much that's, that one can absorb at one time. You guys do this all the time. This is not what we all do. This is not what we all do. And I'm really thankful that you were both able to be here tonight. Anything else? We're going to close this out.
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Shamir.
Well, I think that the environmental component to this thing is pretty much in great hands. The question that comes up is the financial approach to this program. And, and to be honest with you, I would like to have a discussion. I have a few slides that I want to go through and, and to discuss the financial components of this program. Because at the end of the day, we're talking about paying $30 million for a piece of land in two chunks. $15 million for the purchase, $15 million for regrading remediation or whatever we want to call it. However, based on some information that came out on LoopNet, you see some pricing structures of land within this area which was put up for sale for a half a million dollar an acre, $500,000 an acre. So these are critical information, I think, that needs to be disseminated. We are trying to push this thing through three readings. And every week, I think we need to have a very clear understanding of what information is available and I think that needs to be disseminated. And I've got those slides which I want to, I would like to present.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
If I could suggest, I know we have legislation in the collective committee meeting after this, right? So the work session has been designated publicly to be on environmental. We have second reading coming up on the ordinance. I would suggest at that time that could be brought up. Mr. Davis is going to stay.
Perfect.
He can respond to any questions you may have in that regard if that works for the council president.
Yes, and, and what's, what's good about that plan is that we want to stick with what has been published for the public so that we are being legal. I see my, I see attorneys shaking their heads, yes. So I like to be legal. Is that all right?
That's perfect.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else down to my right? Anyone down? I, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you, Ms. Gentry.
I was asking if he can share his presentation in advance so that we don't have to wait another week.
Who, who could, which, which presentation, Mr. Shamir's?
He wanted to just.
Oh, Mr. Shamir's? Okay, so anybody else to my left? Okay, we're going to close then this, we're going to close this work session and we're going to open up with our collective committee meeting in just a moment.
No, you sit around for a second.
Can you stay? Okay, very good. Okay, just a shift, papers. Okay. We're going to open up now our collective committee meeting of November the 3rd. And at this point in time, the audience can come up and they can speak for five minutes on any topic according to section 220.21b1. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Gerald Phillips, 20-year resident of Avon Lake, Concerned Citizen, Certified Public Account, Real Estate Attorney. Fraud, deceit, lack of transparency, corruption, and secrecy. That's what's about this PSA, Purchase-Sale Agreement between the City of Avon Lake and ALERG. We have this so-called survey, which I haven't seen a copy of. It's, it's no data, okay? But we keep hearing about this survey that the infamous Brownfield Committee supposedly has done, but we don't have it in their secret meeting. So let's assume there is this survey, okay? This survey exists and the conclusion is the people want access to the beach, okay? Supposedly that's the critical thing. Everybody wants it, okay? It's so important, access to the beach. Your PSA doesn't include the submerged land lease. Why doesn't it? Why doesn't the city have an option or contractual agreement to buy it based on conditions? Why? Why isn't it in it? Well, fraud, deceit, lack of transparency, corruption, secrecy. That's why it's not in there. It should be in there. Who negotiated it? Todd Davis. He's corrupt. Why isn't it in there? Have you read the assignment of the lease from Genon to ALERG? I have. This is an obligation to make sure that you don't pollute that. And yet, you're going to vote on a PSA, you haven't read the assignment of the lease, you don't even have a right to that submerged lease. It should be in that agreement. There was something about control to get grants? You don't have any control on that submerged land lease to apply for a grant. When you go for a preliminary subdivision and you don't own the land, you have an option and you get consent. We don't have anything. This is the most asinine agreement I've seen as a real estate attorney. It's shocking. And Ms. Gentry hit the point. No submerged land lease? We don't want it. That's true. But you don't have that right right now. And who drafted it? Who negotiated it? Todd Davis. Why didn't he do it? A reasonable, prudent attorney would do it. I would have put it in there. He works with these people. He's world now. You don't think he's got a conflict of interest? He's not looking out the best for you. He billed you for almost a half a million dollars. You better get that submerged land lease in that agreement and have a right to buy it once it's proven good. You don't have it. And your law director screwed up and he didn't even review it and, and did it. Incompetency. 20 years. 20 years. I tried to get on council. I'm not the right fit. I'm the best qualified and I didn't get in because you don't want me there. You don't want me to tell that the emperor isn't wearing clothes. You don't. You don't. So Ms. Gentry, I give you a, a compliment. You hit the nail on the head. No beach, no access, no agreement. Just like we get thrown down to our face, no TIF, no deal. You know why we don't want, you know why we need the TIF? Here's some numbers. They bought the land for 20 million. They already got 3.25 from the water department, 15 from the, from the purchase. Their net cost is 2.75 million. They're advertising, okay, those three extra parcels for 19 million. They're going to make 16 and a quarter million dollars, just flipping it. They're not going to do the vertical. And you look on their website, Inner Loop, that building with the PCB isn't being on the three parcels they're selling. So what I heard that they're going to own it, it's not, it's not confirmed by their agreement, it's not confirmed by their website. Who's lying? Davis? The website? ALERG? I don't trust ALERG further than I can look. Really? You know, I wish, you know, I hope, and, you know, kind of, that we get to people that have a sense of common sense when we elect the at-large people. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward?
William Zimmerman. So I here have a picture that we've all seen and that's about the pink and the area that's going to be the park. This is also where that building rests that nobody says is going to own it. And we're not buying it because we're only buying the park space. Yet on every drawing, it's there in between the buildings of the parcels that are supposedly other investors are going to buy. So where does this building go? What's going to happen with that land? You all said we're not going to buy that. It's not going to be a part of it. I don't understand it. Why does it show up on the maps? Why isn't there a black hole right there to say, nobody wants that part, let's not take it? Ridiculous. So now I have another map about proposed zoning districts. So my question becomes, why is these proposed zoning districts outside of the purview of the land that we're trying to buy? Why are we all of a sudden including all these other places? Just like on the TIF that we want to go way south down that coal yard to the tracks in Avon. Why are we extending all these places when they're not part of the agreement? They're not part of the land that we're interested in. But we're going to do favors to what? People who own this property or own this property? Oh, wait, these properties over here are owned by Avon Lake Regional Water. Why would they all be included in the parcels that are not a part of the deal? Doesn't make legal sense to me. Sounds like quid pro quo. We're going to do favor for somebody. Citizens of Avon Lake, the election's tomorrow. I hope you understand the importance of tomorrow. The corrupt people are at this panel now. We need to replace them. They continually try to circumvent the law. There is no rule of law and they do what they think they can get away with because nobody's watching. But Concerned Citizens, Gerald Phillips and myself, we are watching. We pay attention. We try to educate you. I hope that tomorrow when you go to the ballot box and you pick the people that will best represent us, not the perfect fit, not necessarily the most qualified, but we need to have proper representation on this panel. The old guard needs to go. Plain and simple. So let's go back to information that I gained today on the computer. I'm going to read it to you because I'm not allowed to show it on a screen or anything so that everybody could see it. So this is from Avison Young's page. Is pleased to deliver this offering to solicit proposals for prospective buyers with the intention of entering into a definitive purchase-sales agreement and invite the purchaser and participate in the finalization of zoning, tax increment, financing, district formation, development agreement activities. The lakefront parcel will be offered in three formats. A bulk purchase of the entire lakefront parcel for 28.5. Sounds like somebody's getting a deal. A bulk purchase of lakefront parcel for 32 with the assignment that Avon Lake City will offer 15 million partial purchase for lakefront and public parks. A purchase of the parcels from seller in phased takedowns of 19 million in the City of Avon Lake, direct purchase of the park parcels. In addition, an additional 46 acres industrial parcel, the railroad parcel located one mile south of Avon, of lakefront parcel is offered for 3 million. That's why in the other meeting I asked, how much did we buy it for? Because now it's supposedly being offered for 3 million. These people are corrupt. They're doing it routinely and regularly. They're led by this man who supposedly has our interest. I don't believe he does.
Does anybody else want to come forward at this time on any topic? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on then with our meeting. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not going to address everything. We'll leave some of that for Mr. Davis. Couple of points were brought up.
Point of order, I believe, Robert School.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Mr. Mayor has a right to speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. The purchase agreement as, that we're all looking at on page E2 clearly outlines, despite the map that he was showing, clearly outlines that the transformer repair building is within the area being retained by ALERG. I want to point that out. And I believe the property he's referring to in his last statement that was $3 million, that is south of Walker Road. That is not the same property that was purchased by Avon Lake Regional Water. That is the property that runs from Walker Road south to the railroad tracks.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarification. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to move on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Zuber, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item that we have that came out of finance today is the fee schedule. There's two items. The Recreation Director brought up increasing the fees for the pools. Fee increases for 26 and 27 for the pool, they're attached. And the other, and that was voted out of the committee three to zero. And the other item is the Police Department video recordings. That's for body cams and dash cams from the Police Department. They have put together a fee schedule for that to be, due to the editing of the process and procedures they have to go through for those particular video productions, their cost would be $75 per hour for video production and it's not to exceed $750. My intention is to move forward for first reading on these two items and go for three readings.
Any questions for Mr. Zuber on this particular item? Yes, Ms. Gentry?
Not on this item, but before we continue, do we still need our?
Consultants?
Consultants.
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Because of what we've said to Mr. Shamir, later on, we have a topic coming up.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber, go ahead. Your next item, sir.
The next, the next item is the increase in license fees, license plate fees. We had had significant discussion on this in committee. We had it at the last regular collective committee meeting and talked about it a little bit more in the committee. And what had come out of the committee was a proposal to increase the license plate fee by $20. That would raise $466,000 annually. That would start January 1st of 2027 because we would have had to pass this prior to June 30th, I believe, of this year in order for it to go into effect in '26. So this was also, came out of the committee. We're going to have three readings on this also. So, and this would give some deference to the council that's also coming in because they could always repeal it if they felt the need to do that. And I, and I'll just comment on the same comment I made last week. There's 75 communities between Cuyahoga and Lorraine County. 70 of those communities have a license plate fee that is above the $10 that the City of Avon Lake has. So out of those 75, 70 have an increase or have a license fee that is more than what's in Avon Lake. So my plan is to put that forward for also for three readings.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this particular one? I think for the public to know that I'm going to name them off for, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I, I would reiterate that anything with regard to the license plate fees would be used for our roads. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, by law, we need to. Right, so Alaria has it at $25, Grafton $25, $20 would be at Lake Range. Trying to make sure I can read these. Lorraine has it at $25. There's $30 if for a million, $20 at Wellington. So what we're doing is, as you have said, is throughout the area and we're just now catching up with it. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none? Go ahead, Mr. Zuber, your next item.
The next one I'm going to take together is the procurement policy and procedure and the update of chapter 251, 252, purchasing procedures. These go hand in hand. These were voted out of the committee also on a three to zero vote. What, this is just updating the policies. We've been talking about this for well over a year, at least the policies and procedures. When we got the new Finance Director, she came in, she wanted to take another look at them before we moved forward on them. And the biggest change is something that I had talked to the And the biggest change is something that I had talked to the mayor about, that we used to have anything over $50,000 was a, had to go out for bid. The, the way the ORC, the High Revised Code reads now, you can, between $50,000 and $77,000, it's only above $77,000 that has to be bid. So we're incorporating that so that any purchase that the city makes between $50,000 and $77,000 would have to get an approval from council, either in a council committee, at a collective committee meeting, or a regular meeting of council. And that's in order to speed up the process because at this point in time, we have a longer process that we have to do for those particular items. And I think especially within the Public Works Department, this hopefully would speed up some purchases of many different items. The only question that we had and the Law Director's going to have to, we're going to have some discussion on him, with him on if the procurement policy and procedures have to be on ordinance or we could do that by motion. The update of chapter 252 is, is, has to be legislation, but we're looking to do this on a suspension of the rule after the second reading because we've had a lot of different discussion on this and we're finally moving forward. It's been, like I said, well over a year that we've had some discussion on this. So we would look at passage of this on the 24th, possibly next week if the Law Director feels that we could do the procurement procedures and policies by motion.
Mr. Zuber?
Mr. Ebert?
By motion, you can do it. There's a bottom below the state. Yep.
So the procurement policies and procedures by motion, and then chapter 252 would be by ordinance?
Right.
And we would look at suspending the rule on the second reading on 252.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Shamir?
I do apologize I missed the meeting. As I mentioned before, now, when there's an award under that $50,000 and $75,000 threshold, now, how many renewals or awards can be given to the same vendor in a fiscal year? And, and there's a specific reason I'm asking that.
Mr. Ebert?
You're saying to the same vendor?
To the same vendor.
If it's bid, if something's bid or professional?
No, this is professional or single source. Effectively doing a single source.
As long as you're doing it by ordinance.
But that's not the question.
The question is how many can go to each, each individual.
So.
If it's the same person.
Same person or same company?
Renewals, he's talking.
If I have a threshold, what is that threshold that I can continuously award to the same person? Because you could potentially, and, and I'm looking at it, you could potentially break up a contract and piecemeal it.
All right. If you, yeah, I will, I will put something in memo to you.
Please.
I will put it in memo. You're saying basically the same vendor or same professional or whatever.
Yes.
All right, I'll put you in memo.
Thank you.
You're talking about under the bid threshold.
Exactly.
Under the bid threshold.
And, and if I could, it's, would, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shamir, but what I'm hearing is you're asking actually two questions. One has to do with a professional and one has to do with a vendor, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you.
Ms. Gentry, your hands up.
Yeah, so does, do we know how many of our purchasing contracts we, we pass as an emergency?
Well, first of all, emergency means, just make sure everybody out here knows, emergency means that it's going to go into effect immediately after signature, after the vote, after signature of the mayor and I. And if there is no emergency, then it takes 30 days after we've all voted it through. Correct?
Correct. So do we, because I feel like most of our ordinances, especially particularly with the purchasing, are done on an emergency basis. And I was wondering if there's anything we can do in the ordinances so that we don't have to state that this is as an emergency. There may not be, but it's just a question.
Just, yeah, the charter reflects that.
The charter reflects.
Specifically, it's done in order to get the contracts done in a quick and efficient way for like street repairs or payments and things like that.
Oh, I know why. I'm saying, is there any way we can make it so that it's, we don't have to pass as an emergence? I, I don't know. It might be a stupid question, but.
It's not a stupid question. So I have a question for you. Are you, are you believing or feeling that passage by emergency, there's something wrong with that?
It does not. But the people that come to me and they're like, why is everything an emergency here? Can we not plan? And so they, I know they don't understand why we're stating that this is an emergency. I understand that. It's really hard for me to have to communicate that to everyone all the time. So is there something that we can change so that it?
If I could.
Go ahead.
Yes, so Oberlin has some, some language that we are looking at that could replace the words passage by emergency. And that's something that, that might need to go to the charter review. I'm not sure, but, but we're looking at that. Our Finance Director came up with some of the language that they had used because their residents had an issue with it too. Because when you say emergency, you're thinking hurricane, you're thinking this is a, a physical emergency, there's a fire, you got to put something out, you know? And that's not what it's, what it is. So there, there is another way to say it. And we're looking at, Mr. Zuber, yes?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's, that's why if you look on at 252, the last section, that's why we've increased between $50,000 and $77,000, we don't have to go out for bid. We just got to get the three quotes now, and it has to take some type of council action. So that's, that's going to do away with a lot of legislation that we have to pass in regards to that.
But after the action that we take would still have to be 30 days unless we declare it as an emergency. And I don't know that, I don't really understand health, safety, and welfare and how we define that to make emergency really adequate.
Mr. Shamir?
You know, I, I agree with Ms. Gentry, and we've discussed call-off contracts that are multi-year, multi-company. But what kind of actually disturbs me is the comment that we are doing this $75,000 increase and limit so we don't have to bring it up. It's still going to happen, so.
No, 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 no. We have to bring it up. Council has to take some type of action between $50,000 and $77,000.
But it's no longer.
We're still taking ads, we just don't have to do a ordinance for it. That's the change. That's the big change, no ordinance.
You will go through three readings for everything.
Right, we don't have to do an ordinance for it.
Okay.
No, if you don't have to do an ordinance, it's not going to go through any readings.
Exactly. That's what I thought.
So, so this is going to be matching what the state of Ohio has. And this is something that we've been discussing for at least two years. I think the Law Director has something he wants to add.
Yeah, there's, there's some communities who, who look at that and say, although the state has gone up in the amount, the various councils say, well, that's fine, but we want to set at 50 or 80 or, I'm sure 50 or 60 versus going up with the state. A lot of councils do that. They want to have their hands more on tap in those situations. But the issue as far as emergency clause and how to explain it, I guess it needs to be explained with that, that if you have three readings in something without the emergency, even though you want to award that contract to repair the streets, this thing, it's going to take a month and a half before it actually gets passed by council because it's going to be three readings in the council meetings. You don't pass them during the collective committee meeting unless you have, you know, a special situation. So that's the reason for as far as the special, or the waiving the three-reading rule and the passing of emergency.
So that's suspension, not the, the emergency. I'm specifically referring.
No, it's not suspension rules, it's like a pass it versus go three readings.
But that's not a better question.
No, I'm, I'm not asking about the suspension. It's more the emergency declaration that has to be for the health, safety, and welfare. We want to make it implemented today rather than 30 days from now.
So Ms. Gentry, I would, I would really like to have the Finance Director forward to the Law Director what the processes that Oberlin uses so that we could have a legal statement as to what we need to do because I've been on council since 2008, and you're absolutely correct. The public does not understand what that means, emergency passage. And they come to me, you guys don't plan? I hear it all the time. And that's not what the emergency passage is, as you know. So let's take a look at what some other communities do, and let's have a legal review of it. And we also have to find out, Mr. Law Director, if it is in the charter, it's going to have to go through charter review.
Charter would have to.
And if it's not in the charter, then it would be up to city council.
You'd have to put it on.
Mr. Shamir, is your hand still up?
Yep, I.
No, it's okay. I can't tell if it's up or if you're just thinking.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm trying to think and contemplate. And the question that I've still got goes back to the fundamental of why can't we put in call-off contracts so we don't have to go through the process? You can set up three-year call-off contracts, one year with renewables, and there is no contractual obligation on a call-off. So if we set up call-off contracts, we can offset the program, offset the problem of emergencies. There, then we would reduce the number of emergencies and, and allow our directors to be able to call off actual work based on their budgets and work programs. Thank you.
I, I understand. I think, I think one of the things we need to do, and we're going to be in front of them very shortly, and that is to make sure that the state auditor is good with it because we have to still go through the, the test of the state auditor if they're good with a tax entity having call-off contracts. I know call-off contracts are very common in other industries, but I'm not sure if we're able to do it as a local government. Ms. Gentry?
I've not heard that term. Can you explain?
So you, what happens is you send out a tender or a request for proposal to a number of companies. What happens, they will submit their technical qualification and the pricing range. What happens is then you will select two, maybe three companies out of the list, and every time that you have a task or a project, you will send them a requirement. They will send you a pricing, and based on that pricing, you will see what you have, and you will take the best, best value for the dollar and technical capabilities and completion requirement that you have. It's a, it's, it's done every day, and that's, that's effectively what a call-off contract is.
Thank you. So we go out with an RFQ first, is what he's, he's saying. And then after you have your qualifications, you have your pool from which you're going to be utilizing. And this is something, once again, we need to go through the state auditor to make sure that the state auditor is happy with it and good with it. Mr. Mayor, your hands up.
Yeah, just two things. The emergency ordinance is within the charter. It's section 10, so we'd have to have a charter ordinance change to change that language. And I think what he's referring to is call-off, it's also known as master service agreements. We already currently have those. So for example, Building Department, we have code reviews for commercial properties. We have contracts with two different organizations, and they can pick or choose which one. We also have it for our outfalls. We have two companies under contract under master services agreement to do outfall work. And we can choose either one of those, and we just give them a task, they provide a contract proposal, and then council approves that contract proposal and we move on. It prevents you from having to go out and do an RFQ every time you have a project, if that is helpful.
Thank you.
And I recognize by the state.
They are recognized. But the, the question I think Mr. Shamir is asking, Mr. Mayor, is that we do this throughout a year, but what about multiple years? That we can have it for multiple?
We have five-year contracts for the outfalls.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I saw Mr. Smith's hand up.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is when it comes to discussing emergency ordinances, you might want to tell the constituents that the, it's a kind of an antiquated term. Immediate enforcement is what you're really asking for due to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, whether that's fixing roads, whether that's making sure contracts are in place. But it is, it's, it's basically means that it's going into effect immediately, more so than as an emergency. There are emergency measures which are separate and apart from what you see in the ordinances on a day-to-day basis. Second thing, when it comes to contracts, there is some difficulty in having contracts that extend beyond one year or the term of a council. I haven't looked at that in a while, but I know that to be an issue that there is out there. So that would be part of the reason to it. And I don't know if Mr. Ebert wants to expand on that or not, but there is some, some, some issues with having contracts that extend too long.
Extend beyond a year, Richard.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on this one? Okay, Mr. Zuber, you have another item on your agenda.
I have several more.
Go forward.
There's your item here, Chair, on the hotel lodging tax.
I think we have the ordinance in our packet, proposed ordinance, and I know that you've done a lot of work on this, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, so I went to the Department of Taxation, and there are actually 88 communities that have a lodging hotel tax on short-term rentals, anything under 30 days and less, hotels, Airbnb, on and on. And reservation platforms are used to accepting these and paying them. For counties, they're paid quarterly to that county. For, for local government, they're paid on a monthly basis. And there's already a 3% hotel lodging tax, it's called an excise tax, that the county has. So this, what I'm recommending is that by the, the new ordinances that the state's working on and that they, we believe are going to be passed, we have a 7% cap, so I'm recommending a 3% lodging hotel tax be added, and this would be then paid to the municipality. The way that the monies are able to be spent, divide them in half. Half of them go toward marketing, attraction, which Mr. Esborn, who's in the audience, would be happy with. And then the other 50% goes into the general fund, which may end up paying for all the life inspections that we need to have on these, which our Finance Director's going to be happy with. And I have multiple examples of, of, of the ordinances in other communities and also the forms that other communities have used to register the platforms and with the city so that they can be paid. And I also have a form that if there needs to be a refund, for example, if there's a government entity that would be coming in, they would be tax exempt. So there's an exemption form that, that would be filled out. And the platform already has that. There has been agreement between the platform and the city. So this is something that goes back into the 70s. I have examples back to the 70s, all the way up to this year. In our own community, in our own Lorraine County, Mr. Oberlin, North Ridgeville, has it. Alaria, Lorraine, Avon has it. I'm doing it off the top of my head. And some of the townships have it. Any questions from anybody? Okay, Mr. Zuber, it's back to you. Oh, the intent would be, this can be three readings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item I have is the amendment to Resolution 2513. This is to add purplewave.com to our designated internet auction sites that we use in addition to GovDeals, propertyroom.com, and publicsurplus.com. And when it came out of the committee, we voted to pass this on emergency next week so that our Finance Director and Public Works Director can use and add it to the Purple Wave, all the things that we have now listed on these other sites, too.
Any other additional comments on this particular one? Okay. All right, next one.
And the final item I have is the Q-TAC rock engagement letter. This is for the TIF. This is the firm that we have hired to help us out negotiating TIFs. I think the mayor has some other information that he'd like to share on this, too.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber. We currently contract with Ruth Balthus. He was prior with another law firm. He has changed law firms, so we need to update our letter of engagement. And that's what this is, this ordinance is for. It also caps the amount at $11,500. It also includes the rate of compensation. And his work involves the current TIF ordinance that we're working on for 83 and Walker, and potentially a ordinance, or I'm sorry, a TIF that would include Town Center. So those are the two current scopes of engagement we have with him.
Any further discussion on this particular one? Mr. Zuber, go ahead.
I, I believe that we're going to move on suspension of the rule next week on this, too.
First reading, yes.
Because we have, yes, we have already engaged him in other work.
Okay. I just want to go back. Yes, before, before we go to the question, I just want to go back. Mr. Zuber, I just want to make sure I have my notes. Amend Resolution 2513 internet, that's a suspension of the ruling, first reading, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, the hotels, three readings. Chapter 252, you're going to be doing a motion on the purchase procedures. And chapter 252, is that?
And chapter two fifty-two, is that one reading or two?
Two.
That's two readings, okay. And then um, license plate fees, that would be uh, three readings. And the fee schedule would be three readings.
That's correct.
Okay, now we're going to go over to Mr. Shamir. Go ahead, Mr. Shamir.
Just want to make a comment, and for clarity's sake. This uh, Q-TAC rock engagement letter does not apply to the power plant redevelopment tip. Just want to make sure.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity. Okay, we're going to now move along to Public Safety and Health Committee, Mr. Koz.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. We have a name change on a liquor license permit. Uh, the location of the business is three two seven three zero Walker Road. And the name change is going to be changed to Chu Wu LLC, as is the uh, state law. Anytime that there's a name change on one of these um, liquor license permits, this is not a new one, this is just a name change on an existing one, the city council will have the opportunity, or municipality will have an opportunity to request a hearing on that liquor license permit. Uh, this has been reviewed by Chief Robinson, and he has no concerns over this. Therefore, I'm going to be asking that a motion be placed on next week's agenda uh, that the city will not be requesting a hearing on the name change for this liquor license permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Um, this is for Plum, the restaurant?
That's correct.
I'll know is Plum. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to go on to legislation. Third reading, ordinance number twenty-five dash one six one. Uh, Mr. Arnold, you are the sponsor. Um, this has to do with a new chapter titled Short Term Rental Properties within Title VI Building Regulations and in Part fourteen of the codified ordinances declaring an emergency. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No.
Any comments on this particular one? Yeah, Mr. Koz, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I don't know if everyone saw the story the other day over the weekend. In Bath Township, there was a uh, short-term rental Airbnb where there was a big house, you know, out there. And there was a, a party that was thrown there. There was a shooting, and multiple people were injured. And it came a big story locally. And um, luckily, it doesn't look like anybody uh, was killed. But um, it's kind of that worst nightmare that we talk about with some of these Airbnbs and such. Um, the first thing that I thought of after dealing with this is, boy, do they have an ordinance? And it turned out that they did not. Not saying an ordinance would stop all of these things, it wouldn't. But I'm just very grateful that we are getting ahead of this. We have not had an issue like that in our city. We've seen them around us. Um, that we are getting ahead of this situation and putting some things in place that will hopefully deter situations like that from happening.
Actually, Mr. Koz, um, right before the, I left for the meeting here, there was an update. And Bath does not permit them, and it would be a zoning violation. And um, there, so the law director in Bath is actually contacting Airbnb itself becau- and not only the owner, who is cooperating, uh, who, yeah, I believe is out of state. Um, but um, they do have an ordinance, and they do not permit them. And this was placed on social media. Um, many of the young people that were there, and there were some adults, were not from that area. They came in from other areas. So um, adults, parents, grandparents, family, if you hear that your young people are going to go to this big party they heard about on social media, um, this is not a good thing. Please deter them. Um, this is an example. And, and some of the people that were injured were adults. They were not all young people. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, no one else? All right, then we're going to go on then to resolution number twenty-five dash one six two. Mr. Shamir, this is yours. This has to do with adopting the rules and regulations of the Avon Lake Community Television, ALCTV. Do you have something else you'd like to add?
This is basically a formalization and updating of the rules and regulations that were already in place, and it's just bringing it up to date. Nothing else.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add to that? It's been, it's about time it happened, to be honest with you. Thank you. Um, the next ordinance is twenty-five one six six. Mr. Smith, this is yours.
Thank you.
It's an ordinance to rezone permanent parcel number oh four oh oh, oh oh six one three five oh seven one from a B two general business district to R one A, single-family resident district, and declaring an emergency. Is there something else you'd like to add, sir?
Uh, we've, we had a public hearing on this uh, last week, and I think council's fully aware of what's going on here. It's a property over on Moore Road, uh, just on the, across from the Drug Mart Plaza, uh, north of the Drug Mart Plaza on Moore Road on the other side of the street. Thank you.
And this has had three readings. Very good. Now we're down to second readings. Oh, any comments on this one? Okay, now we're down to second readings. Ordinance number twenty-five dash one six seven. Mr. Arnold, this is yours. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement between the city of Avon Lake and Avon Lake Environmental Redevelopment Group, LLC, for the acquisition of approximately twenty-three acres of land located in the city of Avon Lake and declaring an emergency. Sir, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, not tonight. I know that the next CCM, we will be having our um, TIF expert come in. Mr. McLough will be here as well to answer any questions about TIFs.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Shamir?
If I may, well.
Go right ahead, sir.
Uh, so the PSA, I made my comments the last time around. Uh, Thursday night, Friday morning, I had a package in my mailbox that was uh, a number of pictures off of Loop, LoopNet. And I dug out the information and, and went through it. And effectively, it relates to the redevelopment of the power plant, the TIF. And as we all know, the green space here is the area that we're looking to purchase, the twenty-three acres. The concept is to pick up twenty-three point two-two acres through a TIF, fifteen million for the purchase, and another fifteen million for the regrading for a thirty-year period. That's a sixty million to- total TIF. And these are, again, conceptuals. And then the remaining six, nineteen point six acres are reserved for private mixed use. So where this information was uh, printed off of was LoopNet.com. And it effectively has a number of slides that, that I've just kind of gone through. But when you look at it, it looks like that uh, the rezoning has quite a bit of value, upside for, for the project. Now, the quality of these images are not the best. So I have sent uh, all of these via email just right now to everyone. So this is the site progress, as it's been labeled. And it goes through the demolition and everything else that's gone up till today. Now, LoopNet shows this property, which is Avison Young seems to have put it out there, on three different scenarios for purchase. One is twenty-eight point five million for the bulk purchase of the total land. The next one is bulk purchase with city parks, which is for thirty-two million. That is, when you look at it, just having the city purchase that land all of a sudden turns an upside on that value. And then you have individual purchase of that private parcels, there's three of them, which totals to nineteen million dollars. Now, this brokerage listing effectively shows that the market value increases with the rezoning of the city. So we're actually increasing that value based on their own assessment. So what does the bulk purchase look like? That is the total property. It's twenty-eight and a half million dollars. Well, if you look at twenty-eight and a half million dollars, the city is about to go into a TIF for thirty million, fifteen plus fifteen. That kind of is crazy when you look at it. Then we have the bulk purchase, which is three areas. There is one parcel here, another parcel here, and another parcel here. So that, plus the city parks, all of a sudden takes the value up to thirty-two million dollars. Now, all of a sudden, if I go back, you've gone from a total value that they're trying to recoup of twenty-eight and a half million dollars to thirty-two million here, plus another fifteen. That is all of a sudden forty-seven million dollars, not including the regrading work that has to be done. So all of a sudden, the value based on rezoning increases considerably. Then we have that individual purchase, which is divvied up into different sections. And then they've got the bulk purchase, as is, several different options. One is a data center. Another is one point two million square feet of office space, three and a half stor- three to five stories, again, as is. Bulk purchase, residential units, two thousand one hundred and twenty units, again, bulk purchase. Then you could look at the proposed zoning overlay. Now, this information was also put into my mailbox, which shows com- effectively comparatives at, within the vicinity of the city of Avon Lake, of value per square footage. What I discussed previously is what is it that we're paying for? And who is developing or gaining the most out of this deal? This is another piece of paper that was inserted into my mailbox. Again, it's, it's got the zoning and redevelopment plan, the TIF, and Exhibit C, which seems like the ordinance for the zoning, okay? Which is, that is Exhibit C. But let's break it down. We've got proposed zoning overlays, purchase bulk, twenty-eight and a half million for forty-three point two-three acres at point six-six million, so six hundred and sixty thousand roughly per acre. That entire site, including submerged land lease, no city park dedication. The next one is bulk purchase plus city park. All of a sudden, that's thirty-two million, and that is twenty-one point one-five of private, and that turns out to be one point five one million per acre. Again, remember, we would be, be paying fifteen million dollars for the park, plus there would be selling it for thirty-two million dollars. So that is an upside of roughly nineteen million dollars. Now, if you take individual parcels, that would be nineteen million dollars for that twenty-one point two-four at roughly nine hundred thousand per acre. But when you delve into this, what's interesting is there's three parcels. There is one for seven point five eight acres at eight million dollars. That's one million dollars per acre roughly. The next one is number two, which is seven point seven seven acres, again at eight million dollars, which is roughly about one million an acre. The third one is five point eight nine for three million dollars at roughly about five hundred thousand dollars an acre. That's the easternmost parcel. That's effectively at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than what our negotiation value would be. And I ask myself, why is there a lot for three million dollars out there for six acres roughly? Is that, is there an issue with it? Is that earmarked for someone or something? So there it is. There is the one parcel that is for three million dollars. That's the one that includes the building with the transformer repair house. Now, I ask the question, why is there a section of this property which will have tax-driven value at point five million? So five hundred thousand dollars per acre, when we, in our proposal, in our negotiation strategy, are paying close to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars per acre? So this was all in LoopNet. And, and, and I hear this thing, trust, trust. You know, I agree with trust. Trust, when it's built on clear understanding of risk, is strength. But let me tell you, blind trust is a dangerous game. And at the end of the day, I feel that what was on LoopNet and what we are looking at are quite different. And here you go. This is what we are looking at to pay, fifteen million dollars for that twenty-three acres. We are looking at putting another fifteen million dollars into regrading or colored remediation. And that puts us at thirty million dollars potential total, which puts us as one point two-nine million dollar per acre. Now, when I go back to this, this number, thirty-two million for those parcels bulk, okay? The three parcels bulk is thirty-two million dollars. That is with the city park. Why? Because the value of the zoning is right there. So not only are we giving our zoning for free, we are overpaying for a piece of land that should be dedicated to the city as, as a part of this program. I mean, if we're so crazy about buying it, why don't we buy the whole thing for twenty-eight and a half million dollars? It doesn't make sense. So when I ask the question, and you tell me this is based on a strategy that's been looked at, what is that number? Why are we looking at prices that's been put out on the net for sale of that property which is effectively more than what we're going to pay? We have to revisit this. There is no rush. There is nothing that's pushing us. There is nothing that's going to happen between now and the next six months. So ask the question of yourself, what are we paying for? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shamir. Anybody else? Any topics? Mr. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to afford Todd Davis the ability to respond, answer some of the questions.
Council President agrees. Um, Mr. Davis? Do you need to have a screen available to you?
I would like a screen, yes.
Okay, thank you. Table input, correct? Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond. And what I was asked to do was basically to prepare some information in response to the presentation that, that Councilman Shamir made on October twenty-seventh. Um, this is really designed not to be combative, confrontational. It's really designed to provide information, to give the answers that you've been requesting, hopefully, and to, and to have a discussion about a number of these issues. So at the outset, I have no issue whatsoever or, or problem with debate. I think having a robust debate uh, among city council is critically important to this whole process. I think we should answer all the questions that council has with respect to this uh, transaction. And I also think we should provide information regarding how the negotiations took form. And I also think we should provide information regarding how the negotiations took for, uh, took place. So, I totally appreciate the councilman's passion, both with respect to environmental issues and not just the Councilman Shamir, but everyone's desire and passion with respect to getting the best deal for Avon Lake in connection with this, with this property. But what I don't think you can do, is I don't think you can separate the goals of the project from the strategy that we needed to employ to get to where we are in the context of this purchase and sale agreement. So, I understand that there are different ways to, to reach a deal with somebody, and I want to explain how we got to where we are right now. So, I want to remind everybody, these are the goals that I've presented to everybody from the beginning. I've presented this multiple times, and I just want to reframe this for purposes of our discussion. So, the goals of the transaction are to facilitate one of the largest economic development projects in the history of Avon Lake, to convert this piece of property into a mixed-use district. That's an asset for the city in perpetuity. That's one of the primary goals. Next, and integrated as part of that process, is to create one of the best lakefront parcels and, and perks in the entire state of Ohio to integrate it with Miller Road Park and have it integrated into this parcel as well. Third, and we've had these discussions, and we know how critically important this is, remediate the property in accordance with the voluntary action program, and to get a no further action letter under the VAP, and ultimately, a covenant not to sue for this piece of property. That is one of the principal goals of this transaction. You can't separate that from the other parts of the negotiation. I think it has to be integrated. And then finally, to do all these things without incurring significant cost on behalf of the city. So, those are tall goals to accomplish, and, and we've achieved that through this purchase and sale agreement. What we chose to do was to do it on a collaborative basis rather than on a combative basis. And those are two different approaches. And I think what Councilman Shamir has been articulating is that the preference is to lean on the developer, to be more combative than collaborative. And I can tell you that that's not a strategy that we ultimately decided to employ at this point, because it, it really wasn't effective for us. And I'll explain why. So, I'm going to break down each one of the goals that I've presented historically and tell you the strategy with respect to how we achieved each one of these goals in the purchase and sale, purchase and sale agreement. So, at the outset, when we were brought into the transaction, the outside counsel was brought into this transaction, the city of Avon Lake already said that it was willing to evaluate whether TIF would be appropriate as a tool to unlock the value of this transaction. The professionals were brought in, and we said a couple of things in our negotiation. Number one, that's fine, as long as it's at no cost to the city. And secondly, that the city was not going to stand behind any of the bonds necessary to achieve this project. Those are two critical changes in the TIF process. In reviewing the tape from last week, and my understanding, and I don't want to put any words in Councilman Shamir's mouth, he can speak for himself, but, so I'm just going to relay what my understanding of, of the sentiment was. You really didn't have an opposition to using TIF as a tool to unlock the value of this property. The main questions, which you just repeated in your last presentation, are what's the appropriate amount of the TIF that should be allocated to this piece of property? And should TIF be used for acquisition? And if so, what's the appropriate amount of TIF to be used for the acquisition? I think that those are the primary questions to be answered in connection with the presentation. So, just to be a hundred percent clear, and I've said this before, our initial approach to this acquisition was to do exactly what Councilman Shamir has advocated, to use the overlay district and the rezoning process in an effort to acquire this piece of property for the lowest possible cost or for no cost. That's, that's how we started the discussion. And we had that discussion for, for many months with ALurg as we started the process. So, why didn't we just stick with that one approach? Obviously, it, it's a more combative approach. It's a less collaborative approach to reaching a deal. Quite simply, ALurg was not willing to transfer the piece of property just through a rezoning process. And in talking with Bern Zockner, certainly, it, it raised very significant questions of potential litigation overtaking issues associated with this piece of property. Now, I'm not going to get deeply into the Bern Zockner analysis, but I can tell you that it is a significant issue in connection with, with relying solely on zoning. Undoubtedly, it would risk very significant delays in the context of this project, as well as the potential for litigation. So, that's one issue. Another issue is, remember the importance of the remediation goal, which I think everyone agrees, i- is fundamental to, to this whole transaction. We had a meeting before this meeting that was focused nothing, on nothing but environmental issues. So, I'm here to point out that you can't force remediation through zoning requirements, especially under the facts and circumstances of this transaction. And let me explain why. When ALurg purchased this piece of property, they did phase one, and they qualified for what's called the bona fide prospective purchaser safe harbor under federal law and state law. ALurg is not the polluter. They're not the people who caused or contributed to the contamination in this property. Those were the prior owners and operators of the, of the, of the plant. So, from a legal perspective, having qualified for the safe harbor, only through a voluntary agreement can Ohio EPA, or US EPA for that matter, require them to remediate this piece of property. Remediating this piece of property is a fundamental goal of this transaction, which I think everybody agrees with. So, that's a primary concern with a zoning-only approach to this, to this issue. Another issue, if you just, and if you look at the draft ordinance that's before, that's before you at this point, all it requires, it doesn't require the conveyance of the piece of property, it requires a minimum of twenty acres of, of public access park on the lakefront. So, that, that's a pretty important distinction. Doesn't give us permanent control of that piece of property, doesn't allow us to work with the metro parks, to build it out. Council President, Fender Bosch had multiple questions about what could be done with this piece of property. We would have absolutely no right to tell the private owner of that piece of property, even if public access was part of it, what it should look like or what it could be developed for. And I think, as we understood the transaction, that was very important to the city. We want to have that level of control with respect to what the end use of that piece of property looks like. So, that's another issue. And then finally, through the zoning process alone and without the use of a TIF, it doesn't provide the fifteen million dollars of funding to improve the park itself. All you get is access to an unimproved piece of raw land, which is not the goal of this transaction. Next goal, which is related, and it's integrating that piece of property into one of the best lakefront parks, combining Miller Road Park with this contiguous piece of property, which is generally the vision. My understanding, having reviewed last week's tape, is that you really didn't have an opposition or an objection to the goal of a park or lakefront access. Price, as you've just pointed out, is the main concern. So, you've asked multiple times, how did we achieve the negotiation over purchase price? So, we started, it was a negoti-, and as I've said before, it was a negotiated process. We, we said it a couple of weeks ago. But we started by looking at what we thought comparable values for the piece of property were. And certainly, as the appraisals pointed out, and I was familiar with, because I've paid attention to some of the transactions that are consistent with this deal, you look at what Cleveland Metro Parks has acquired land along the Cuyahoga River for. There are multiple transactions that the park system has done for way above the purchase price that the city of Avon Lake is proposing on this transaction. So, that was just the starting point for the discussions. And then it was negotiated. They wanted more, we wanted to pay less, we reached what we thought was an equitable price for this piece of real estate. But we put in, we built in the agreement some protections as well. We put in the protection of the need to, to go out, do an independent appraisal of this piece of property, to have a third-party independent appraiser who we trusted evaluate the value of this piece of real estate. We didn't know how the transaction, or how that appraisal would come out, but, you know, looking at comparable values, I mean, that's the way this process unfolds. And fortunately, this independent appraiser who we hired, Ridley Huber, who is one of the best appraisers in the state of Ohio, substantiated the fact that it's worth fifteen million bucks. Obviously, Adler's appraiser said the same. You know, you can go in, you could criticize the appraisals, you, you could certainly, could you find another appraiser to come up with a different number? Of course, people do that in litigation all the time, okay? But we're using professionals whom we trust and we rely on. That's, that's how we did it. We also built in another protection on behalf of the city in connection with this. We put limits to protect the value of the deal itself. So, we wanted to make sure, and this is how we come up with the sixty-million-dollar budget, we wanted to make sure that no more than twenty-five percent of the value of the TIF was used for this park acquisition, because we needed more money. We wanted to make sure that there was more money to support the vertical development and the deal. So, could that have been a different number? Will it ultimately be a different number? Yeah, absolutely. It could, it could have been a little more, it could have been a little less, but, but we needed to start with something that we thought was reasonable in the context of, of executing the transaction in a way that we all want the property to, to unfold in the future. Finally, I, I think it's important to remind people, I, I think it's, it's, it's a very different discussion. We're, the vertical developers who step in to backstop and pay the incremental taxes are paying for the acquisition. It's not the city that's paying it. It's tax dollars that are generated through private investment in the city. That's an, it, so if you wanted to say, well, why doesn't the city just go out and, and pay thirty-two million and buy the whole piece of property? Then the city's putting its full faith and credit behind the transaction, the city's going to have to come up with thirty-two million dollars, or whatever the negotiated figure is. That's not, that was verboten under the, 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 the deal that was structured, where the city said, doesn't want to put any of its own money into this deal. That's the only way you get to that acquisition. So, again, I, you know, just in summary with respect to these issues, just relying on zoning and leaning on the developer is not, wasn't effective in our negotiation. Could someone else have negotiated it differently? Maybe. I'm telling you that, that's, we had a very good team between ourselves and Bern, Berns Ockner, and we, we thought we did a yeoman's job with respect to this negotiation. But that's what you're referring to by zoning monetization and the increase. Sure, if, if you're rezoning the property, is the value going to increase? Absolutely. The question is, isn't that the kind of project that we want on that lakefront? I think the answer is a hundred percent yes. We don't want an industrial property. We could, listen, if they put a data center there, it would generate a lot more taxes than, than a residential development. I, having looked at many, many data center deals, especially in the last two years, I think the chances of a data center on that piece of property next to the lake is zero. But, you know, that's an option. The city could say, we don't want to rezone, we want to keep it industrial. That would not be, I think, consistent with what we were hired to help the city try to do. But, you know, that's always a possibility. Next, and I think you'll see, if we push that issue even more, our outside counsel, Berns Ockner, is going to say, there's a substantial risk of litigation, both over rezoning issues and overtakings issues. And some of the cases that you cited in your presentation last week stand for that exact proposition. You can't do some of these things, you can't even require, one of the cases, the Nolan case, and I reviewed all the cases, say that you specifically cannot do that, even with respect to requiring an easement on the beach without compensation. So, that's a violation of the Fifth Amendment, and you're going to have major takings litigation, undoubtedly, also inconsistent with the city's desire not to spend money on this transaction. Finally, there's no doubt that you're going to create a situation with the developer, the land developer, that's acrimonious and is not going to lead to a better transaction, in my opinion. So, we just decided that, as we, we saw all the different goals, and I don't think the goals are mutually exclusive, I think we want to achieve each one of those goals as we go through this transaction. That's why the agreement was pushed and pulled in the way that it was. And we, we thought that a collaborative approach with ALurg was better than a combative approach. Next, remediating the property to applicable standards in accordance with the Ohio Voluntary Action Program. Well, obviously, this is a key goal that we've discussed at length. As I mentioned before, you can't achieve that through zoning, especially given the facts and circumstances of this transaction. You can't force the remediation in, in this way. Go talk to the Director of Ohio EPA, please, and they'll tell you the same thing. The question and the statements have been made. So, put that aside, put the legal mechanisms aside. Of course, ALurg has to remediate the property to sell it. That's true for the private parcels that it's seeking to sell, but it's not true if the mechanism is, we're going to leave a park and require public access to the park through, assuming that they would agree to the rezoning process, which, based on our discussions, they wouldn't agree to. So, they don't have an obligation to remediate that park property themselves. That's going to lead to potential litigation with parties that aren't in the room, and certainly, is a lengthy, lengthy process with well-capitalized companies. And, you know, candidly, I don't think the city council has the appetite to do that. Certainly not something I would recommend. But, you know, it's an option. I, I think the other thing to point out is that there's many ways to remediate this piece of property. We've said, and I know Councilman Shamir agrees, that using the Ohio Voluntary Action Program and our own certified professional is extraordinarily, it, it's a big deal in the context of this transaction. We want to make sure that we're meticulously investigating this piece of property, and then we're not closing until we're comfortable. I can tell you with absolute certainty that there's no way we could have negotiated to have Steve Gross, a certified professional, sitting where he's sitting now, leading the investigation, having to sign off on the remediation, but for a collaborative approach to negotiating this real estate purchase agreement. Just wouldn't happen. They, they would clam up, they wouldn't give us any information, they wouldn't be talking to us, and we would be, if not in litigation, we would certainly be staring at each other without any progress on this deal. Finally, getting all this done without paying a lot of money on behalf of the city, which is, you know, a key goal. So, obviously, that's where TIF comes up. And, you know, my personal opinion is that it's an elegant solution. It's used by, as we've talked about, and I'm going to let Berns Ockner deal with this in a couple of weeks, that's their expertise, but it's, it's really a tremendous tool. The city isn't pledging its own revenue, the school district has to agree to the process. So, ALurg's going to have to sit down with the school board and negotiate something that the school board thinks is a good deal for them, if they want to use a thirty-year TIF. I mean, it, it's kind of that simple. And I would point out that ALurg already agreed on a And I would point out that Aylard already agreed on a cooperative basis to pay the city's expenses, including for outside counsel, for outside environmental professionals. So it's not, I think we're getting a lot out of this, this structure and this transaction on behalf of the city. What if it was a zoning-only approach? Certainly, you've got potential for litigation expense, significant expense for the park improvements, loss of control over the park property, and undoubtedly delays in the context of this transaction. So I wanted to address the slide, one of the slides, and just put a finer point on some of the buckets of funding, to be absolutely clear with respect to how those were developed, and how I think we should look at them. I mean, yes, it's a $60 million framework, it's a bucket of, of funding that's available for the TIF, divided up into a, a variety of different expenses. But, you know, we're at the very front end by signing this agreement, and I know, you know, this is a question that has come up in other contexts, including the remediation, you know, this is the starting point, the launching point of a negotiation with respect to how this deal is really gonna look. It, it has to go through underwriting, gotta talk to the Port Authority, gotta talk to the school board, there are a lot of things to come in this process. Signing this purchase and sale agreement is just the start of, of an entire process. That being said, I wanted to address some of the questions in the buckets that were articulated. So $15 million for parkland acquisition, you know, is there a disagreement about what that's worth? Is it worth less than $15 million in your opinion or other people's opinion? Is it worth more? That was the negotiated purchase price, it was substantiated by two of the best appraisal firms in the state of Ohio. Could other people have differences of opinion? Sure. But I think we've done our due diligence with respect to what the value of that piece of property. You know, you all live in this community, you know what housing on a lakefront goes for. I, I think it's a fair value, given what's been put on the table. Next bucket, the, the next $15 million. I, I want to be crystal clear with respect to where that came from. That, that came from me specifically. Like, I specifically, as we were negotiating that for, for the TIF allocation, I put in a request for $15 million for improvements to the park. Because I knew, having developed lakefront parks before, that it's very, it's a very expensive process. The image that was shown by Gensler, which is a beautiful picture, that's, that could be a $100 million park that, that they're showing. A $15 million bucket of money, I, I think, is a great start with respect to enacting some of the, the vision that the community might have with respect to this piece of property, but not including that $15 million, I think, is a huge mistake. And to put a finer point on it, if you said tomorrow that we don't want the $15 million, Aylard would agree in a heartbeat. They, they would rather use that money for something else. So you could take 25% of the TIF out of the process if you wanted to. Not something I would recommend, I think it would be a huge mistake, but that, that, that's up to the city council with respect to the amount of the TIF. If you want to take the $15 million out, Aylard will say yes, guaranteed. But I also want to be clear that that $15 million is not to be used for remediation or solely for site grading in order to achieve applicable standards on the property. We said in the purchase and sale agreement that they could use TIF, but that's gonna come out of the $30 million below. The 30, the $15 million is to be used to do the things that Council President Fenderbach was asking you about in the beginning, which is to make a beautiful park, which is, I think, consistent with what the city's vision is for this transaction. And then with respect to the rest, listen, I don't know how the underwriting process is gonna go, you know, again, that's a to come, it should be looked at, are, are these numbers potentially gonna be massaged, will it be more, will it be less? I mean, we'll have to get into the due diligence aspects of the redevelopment, but that's how these deals work. You gotta start somewhere, and we're starting upfront with the real estate purchase agreement, which is the very beginning of the work to come. And again, I'm gonna defer to Burns Ockner on this, but I did think it was important to address this slide that was in the presentation, which says, "Ohio law allows cities to require developers to set aside land for parks or pay park fees when approving new housing or business projects, as long as the requirements are fair and proportional. Cities like Dublin and Columbus are already using these rules effectively." Well, Burns Ockner can spend a lot of time on this issue, and I, I did review all of the statutes and the cases that were presented in the presentation. I mean, to me, this is a statement that, it's not, it's not a sophisticated legal analysis, this is a Google search response or an AI response with respect to these issues. It, it's nothing but that. And since you raised the city of Dublin and city of Columbus, I can tell you that the city of Dublin and city of Columbus extensively use TIF as part of their mechanisms. So I just pulled, I looked at the city of Dublin's program, if you've ever been to Dublin, it's a beautiful community, it's got tremendous investment right outside of Columbus. This is what they say on their website, and I put the web link to it below so you can check it out yourselves, but some of their statements include the following. If Dublin had not made use of this important tool, referring to TIF, over that time period, which is the time period in the past 30 years, the city would have far less robust economic base, the source of our income tax revenue, and our healthy property tax base, and a much less developed infrastructure system. They have 42 active TIFs in the city of Dublin currently supporting their projects, which is phenomenal. Their last statement, "Without utilizing tax increment financing, it is very likely that this level of private value growth would not have occurred within the city." So again, I'll leave it to the experts on TIF to, to get into the TIF-specific questions of presentation, but, you know, there are over 1,800 TIF districts in the state of Ohio. I think it's a valuable tool that the council should consider. I, I guess, you know, with, with respect to the statutes and the regulations that, that were cited in Councilman Shamir's presentation, my evaluation of them is that most of them were not directly on point and didn't substantiate the acquisition of the park property based on, you know, the summary that was provided. Certainly, Aylard disagrees with that approach, as is their council, and we've had these discussions with Todd Hunt, their council. Undoubtedly, it raises taking issues regarding compensation for that piece of property, and I think it's very hard to argue, I wouldn't want to be on the side of the argument, that taking 55% of the 42 acre property is fair or proportional. If you look at some of the cases, particularly focusing on the Nolan case, it, it's ripe for litigation under the Fifth Amendment. And then, you know, putting that aside, if we get into that kind of dispute, it's gonna delay the project, it's not gonna require, result in a remediated piece of property like we want it to be remediated, and it certainly doesn't provide for $15 million of improvements in connection with the park property. So I've left these in, obviously, we'll provide this presentation to the city council, and you can look at all this stuff, but here's the citing, you know, most of the regulations apply to planning commission rules and plating rules, it does not stand for the proposition that was stated earlier in the agreement. So in closing, I, I just want to remind everyone where we started. You know, in 2022, at the start of this project, this is what the property looked like. We had a horrifically blighted piece of property sitting on the best parcel of potential redevelopment land in the city of Avon Lake, on, on a major groundfield site. It was full of asbestos, it was full of hazardous materials. Steve Gross has told you, I'm telling you, having done many of these sites, this is a complicated process and project to work on, and I think Aylard has done a great job so far. Does that mean we trust them? It's our job to make sure that the work is done correctly, that's why you hired us, okay? So that's what we intend to do. I can tell you, there also was very limited environmental investigation at that point, there was a lot more that needed to be done, but if this project didn't proceed the way it has proceeded on a collaborative basis, and we stopped the demolition, I mean, my mantra was, every day that site was being demolished was a good day for the city of Avon Lake, because you had the potential to have a, a piece of property sitting on that lakefront without a, a redeveloper willing to take the risk on this parcel for, for decades, at the least. Compare, compare that to the amazing progress that I think we have right now, which is a piece of property that, where the demolition is substantially complete, major remediation has already been conducted, including the removal of asbestos and hazardous materials. We forged, I, I think, an unbelievably collaborative approach with the environmental professionals. Certainly, a lot of work needs to be done, but it positions us to have the type of collaborative lakefront development that we're looking to have. And, you know, the bottom line is, our collaborative strategy is working just like we hoped it would work. So that's my response to, to the councilman's presentation from last week and some of the questions. I hope it at least answers some of the questions that were raised for city council, and certainly happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Looking at my colleagues to my left, any additional comments? Colleagues to my right, additional, Mr. Shamir, please.
You know, combative or collaborative is a fine line, and being timid in negotiation also is, got a fine line. I don't think that I've ever questioned funding for a park. The question that I've asked is $15 million for the land. Fundamentally, there is an upside, and if I may be able to switch over.
Yeah, sure.
I would greatly appreciate it.
It'll take us just a moment, Mr. Shamir. Are you ready? You're okay.
Yep. So let's take a look at the bulk purchase with the city and, the city park, a $32 million value. So if you add the 15 on that, that's a $47 million value now to Aylard. So when you look at that 47, the upside from the 28.5 is roughly about 18.5, if I'm not mistaken. And there is a lot of ways that you could come up with a mutual gain. A mutual gain, when you look at their own numbers, what they put up, they're looking for a bulk purchase of 28.5, and I, I understand, somebody wants to sell it and get away. But when you look at the 32, the gain is something that the city could monetize on. Fundamentally, that is my issue. My issue is not the 15 million to, to rework. Yes, it is additional, and there's been discussion that there's 30 million. So the 30 million at the bottom of that funnel, you're telling me, is going to be utilized for any cleanup that is out in the park?
Any of the TIF funding that would be dedicated to site regrading in order to achieve the remediation, not to build the park or to design it or to, to do work on the park, to create the park, but the remediation bucket is gonna come out of the 30 million.
Okay, so that is going to come out of the 30 million. And what about the infrastructure that needs to be put in? That's coming out of that $30 million as well? The roads?
Oh, for the, yeah, that's coming out of the 30 million.
So the 30 million is gonna, is gonna deal with remediation with all the infrastructure. So have you seen the economic model of how this thing will evolve?
No. No, haven't seen, again, that's part of the underwriting process that's to come, absolutely. Have to see how that works, it's gonna have to be negotiated with, I, I, I'm sorry, I went, did you want to respond?
No, that, that, it's great, I'm, I'm actually listening, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's part of the underwriting process that Aylard's gonna have to go through with, with bond counsel and, and in the context of the TIF, they're, they're gonna have to come up with budgets, they're gonna have to price all of the improvements, and they're gonna have to convince a private developer, a vertical developer, that it makes business sense to do that.
Perfect. Now, have you seen how this ties back to the city's economic development strategy? I'm, I'm just wondering.
The portion that I've seen in connection with this property is not on the broader economic development strategy. I know you've made that, that, that point many times. I'm talking about specifics of this piece of property and how the specific property is gonna develop. Now, I can tell you, it's a catalytic change to this area. Will the, will there likely be substantial spill over positive effects that come from this project? A million percent. I mean, what's the value of, of having a phenomenal lakefront park, one of the best parks in the state, in, in the community? How do you value a park? I mean, it's probably a better question for our park director than it is for, for me, but I can tell you, my favorite activity is walking my dog in the park three times a week, and what, how can I put a value on that? To me, it's part of the greatest, part of living in a community that has a great park.
I'd like to bring up Mr. Ted Esborn, if I could, he's in the audience.
Yeah, I just have a.
And I, I, I want to bring him up for a couple reasons. One, I want to hear from him, but we also may have a question.
I just had a quick question for Councilman Shamir. I was trying to bring up the listing from LoopNet. I wasn't able to immediately, but I know on that site, sometimes listings get sort of lost into different categories. Is there, is there a way to navigate to it, to, to find the listing on LoopNet?
I can send you the screen grabs.
Okay. Cause it's, and, and, and it's, and sometimes.
All those images.
Okay.
I was able to find it on Abelson Young.
On Abelson Young's, okay.
So this was on LoopNet, and then it disappeared.
Okay.
So these are all screen grabs off of LoopNet.
Okay.
And then, all of a sudden, they disappeared.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah. And, I'm sorry, I, I lost track of my thoughts. So there are fundamentals that I look for when I look at any investment. How does it fit into my program? I don't believe in, and, and this is me, I don't believe in the concept of build it and they will come. Build it, and they will come if you have a strategy to, to grab them and bring them in. And the big disconnect to date has been integration of this project into an economic development strategy for the community. Can't get it. You ask the question, and you can't see how this ties back into it. You ask the question of how this will look in the community in five years' time, you can't get it. So when I look at a $60 million commitment with a $15 million purchase, when I also look at coming down here and I look at parcels being sold at $500,000 on the same piece of land, I ask the question, how?
Yeah, listen, I, I don't control what Aylard decides to sell their, their balance for their private parcels for. I, that's not up to Todd Davis to decide, that's up to Aylard.
Well, Mr. Davis, I have never questioned your capability. The, the, the question that I've got is, why are we above a, I mean, this is their own listings. They had it for 5.8, 5.9. They had it for five point eight, five point nine acres at half a million dollars.
But they also, I'm sorry.
No, please.
No, no, but they, they also have it for over a million dollars.
I understand.
So, you know, you gotta look at the average price that they're looking to charge and they're looking to, to get out of this piece of property as a developer. You know, one of the other things that, that I think is missing from this whole discussion is we have absolutely no idea how much they've gotten invested into this parcel. I've heard you don't. So there, there have been statements made, uninformed statements, because it's impossible for people other than AILR themselves to know what the investments in the piece of property have been. You can potentially look at public transfer records, but you don't know what's been spent so far on the demolition. You don't know what's been spent on the remediation activities so far and all of the, the legal expense. Listen, these are very expensive, complicated, risky projects. And I know I've heard you on October twenty-seventh say, developers should be for-profit entities and they should make a fair profit or whatever profit they can make on the transaction, as long as that makes sense. I count my own money when I'm doing a deal. I don't count other people's money. And the safeguards that I put in connection with this agreement, because we knew it would be heavily scrutinized in terms of the purchase price, is look at independent appraisals and make sure that the value is justified and substantiated. You could have a difference of opinion. You could say it's worth two million dollars instead of fifteen million dollars. That's your right. It's your opinion. Other people can have other opinions. I'm just telling you, there's a process that you go through in a public acquisition. There's an appraisal mechanism to support it. That's the process that we employ. You've got two amazing appraisal firms that, that have come up with a similar value. You can choose to believe it or not believe it. That's, that's your right.
Mr. Davis, we're up against an alarm that's going to be going off because of the building security. So I have a comment down at the far end down here.
Just a comment in regards to the park, the Cough Park. There's over a hundred thousand people that go through the Cough Park every year. Now, we had no strategy in two thousand and two that would have a hundred thousand people walking through that park every year. So I, I think that at this point in time, when we look at that park, that is the biggest thing that's going to happen in this town in years. And, and that's what we have to look forward to, that we are safe, that the city's safe. And I think that, that the presentation here tonight has, has shown that we are safe in what we're doing here.
And it's also a process, it's a long process. I'm going to ask if we could move on because we do have an alarm going off in twenty-five minutes. Mr. Shamir?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, like everyone has said, this is probably the most important thing, I think, maybe ever in the city.
Absolutely.
Other than the original, putting in of the power plant, probably. But I would not let the fact that we're up against a time limit stop the discussion. I think if there's more things that need to be discussed, please make sure everybody does. So that's what my comment is, because we, and I still say, I want to make sure that this is done right and proper for the best of the citizens. So if there's more discussion that needs to be made, I think we need to do that right now.
Thank you. Anybody else want discussion? To my left, to my right? Okay, then seeing no other discussion, this is the second reading. Mr. Arnold, your intention is to take it on to a third reading, is that correct or?
Yes, three readings.
Thank you. We're going to go on now to ordinance number twenty-five dash one six nine. This also is Mr. Arnold's. And it has to do, I'm sorry, but I, is this yours? Yeah. It's Mr. Arnold's. Has to do with the ordinance creating the Sand Ridge and Harbor Crest tax increment financing, known as the TIF, instead of districts declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real estate taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, authorizing school compensation payments specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district and declaring an emergency. Mr. Arnold, can you elaborate or do you want to elaborate on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say that this is a completely different TIF than what we're talking about on the previous ordinance, that this TIF will be, will benefit that area of town of the Sand Ridge and Harbor Crest, meaning the eighty-three and, and Walker Road Park, I'm sorry, Walker Road Park, Walker Road to, to allow those additional TIF revenues to support that area of town. The schools will get reimbursed for their taxes that they would normally receive as well as the rain kind JBS.
Thank you. So that the public is clear on this, and, cause I have read social media and there's some misinformation out there. This is not to assist with the developers. This is for the city infrastructure. And looking forward to what's going to be happening at the power plant, we need to be able to think forward as to what we need to do with those roads. This, the monies that could be generated from this particular TIF is not going to be harming the schools or JBS. They're carved out. And they can go within one mile of this, the area that's in the TIF area. Any other discussion on this particular one? I'm looking to my right. Mr. Cost, is your hand up or?
No, just waiting.
Okay, very good. To my left? Okay, then we're going to go on. The last one is mine, ordinance number twenty-five dash one seven four, ordinance enacting a code of ordinances for the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing general ordinances of the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, dealing with subjects embraced in such code of ordinances and declaring an emergency. So we're going to be bringing the book with us next Monday so that you can see what, what our, our council clerk and the deputy clerk and our law director have been working with for a year. And this is going to go through readings. Any questions about this particular one? Okay. At that point in time, it's a collective committee meeting, miscellaneous business and announcements. To my right, to my left. Okay, I have a number of them. Stay with me, please. The handbook for the boards, commissions, and committees that's being proposed has been, is at the point now where it's, it's near the point where it's going to be circulating to the law department and to some others for their input. That's number one. Next, the restructuring of the council's committees. That discussion will take place this Wednesday, November fifth, at five PM. We're moving the public service meeting to six PM, from five thirty to six PM it will follow. The next item I want to state is that this is deer season when the deer are frisky and they're running, the bucks are running after the does. And I've received not only emails, but also phone calls that people are very concerned because the bucks seem to be aggressive in their yards, in their neighborhoods. That's correct. This is what they do this time of year, and it is a natural thing. You are in an area where we really enjoy watching our wildlife. Just drive carefully. The next thing has to do with the, oh, give me a moment here. Oh, yes. All of you have boards and commissions. You all work with departments through your committees. Please check with them if there's anything that needs to be added into the budgets. Go back to your department heads and make sure that your boards and commissions are with those department heads' operational budgets, because they will be brought this Saturday to the budget meeting. Next. Okay, go ahead and vote tomorrow. It's November the fourth. We have three positions that are up. And the Board of Elections says that they will certify the vote on November the eighteenth. Once that certification takes place, according to our own rules and our, our charter, we need to meet to be able to vote in the, the new council president and the new council pro tem. And that meeting will take place on the nineteenth. The next meeting that you need to look forward to is December the fourth. By that meeting will be seven thirty. December the fourth will be at six PM. And at that point, the council president-elect will be recommending the committees. Then January the second, this is the new time, seven thirty, mark your calendars. That's when the organizational meeting will take place. And the only thing that we discuss is a script. You'll all have a script, and you'll be bringing everybody in for the organization. And nothing else will be discussed that night. And then January the twelfth, at six PM, are when the photos will be taken place. And I think I got through everything. What is?
The second.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. So according to our charter, we need to meet at the very first business meeting, business day after the first in order to have organizational. And that is a Friday. It is not a Monday. So the second of January twenty-twenty-six is seven thirty. Thank you, this is Ross Mearon. And I believe I covered all of it. It'll take me just a moment to check it off. Yes, that is it. Therefore, we're going to adjourn our meeting. Thank you.